So it'll start May the 17th, it's GBOS regular meeting. And the Girdwood Board of Supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act, as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standard of Conduct. We'll call this meeting to order at 7:01. We'll start with a roll call and disclosures. My name is Mike Edgington. I'm co-chair of GBOS and land use supervisor. Amanda.
Amanda Sassy, the roads supervisor.
And Brianna?
Brianna Sullivan, Parks and Recreation Cemetery and Temporary Fire Supervisor.
Thank you. And Jennifer?
Jennifer Wingard, and I've been a public safety liaison.
Okay, does anybody have any disclosures this evening for any items? I'm not hearing any, so I'm going to normally hand over the chair to Brianna for a minute because I have a disclosure.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, so I'd like to disclose on item 10 of business. There's a request from Girdwood Bearaware for a funding, funding request. I'm currently administering a contract on their behalf, so I do feel this is a conflict and I would like to be recused for that. I think I should be recused for that item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. We can be recused from number 10? I'm gonna hand back the chair, Mike.
Okay, thank you. So when that item comes up, I will leave the meeting. Okay, any other disclosures? Okay, we have several agenda. We'll do the agenda first. Do you hear a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Actually, we need to make a change to tonight's agenda, right?
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Because I think we need to take off number 19, the agenda item, LUC 2104-04, since that, that housing working group did not, that request did not go through land use yet, right?
Yes, it didn't go through land use, so we're gonna table that to next month, so we could just take that off the agenda tonight.
Okay.
We should put a motion forward though to approve and then we'll make that amendment.
Okay, well then I will so move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other changes? Or any other discussion? Okay, not hearing any. Do a voice vote for, to approve the revised agenda tonight. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that sounded unanimous. Move on to the second item, regular meeting minutes approval from April the 19th.
I'll move to approve regular minutes from April 19th.
Thank you, Brianna. Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, in that case, we'll do a voice vote approval. And all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And I heard four, so that's unanimous. April 26th, GBOS special meeting regarding supervisor roles, minutes approval for that meeting. Do you hear a mover?
This is Brianna. I'll move to approve.
Okay, Brianna, Brianna moved and second.
I'll second. This is Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda. Again, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Again, I heard four, so that's unanimous. Now, April the 26th, GBOS quarterly meeting, or GBOS and MOA quarterly meeting minutes. Anyone like to make a motion?
I will. This is Brianna. Move to approve.
Thank you, Brianna. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And although I think everyone's at that meeting, all those, actually, yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 29th of April, GBOS LUC joint work session, land acknowledgement. Can you move, move to approve those minutes?
This is Brianna. I'll move to approve minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Nearly there. April 30th, GBOS special meeting, meeting regarding area-wide budget revision impact on Girdwood. Again, maintain a motion to approve.
This is Amanda. I'll move to approve the special meeting minutes.
Thank you, Amanda. Do you hear a second?
Second.
There's noise coming from somewhere. That might be Tim's phone. I'm not sure what I'm seeing. Noise coming from Tim. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? I'm not sure I had everybody. Okay. I heard no dissent. And the last one is May the 12th, 2021, GBOS work session regarding seat C appointment last week. Again, a motion to approve. Thank you, Brianna. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Jennifer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous again. Excellent. So I'm gonna through that item. It's going to be a busy evening. Announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please keep your phone muted until called on to talk. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinion. There is still a vacancy for one seasonal trail crew working for Girdwood Parks and Rec this summer. Details can be found on the link in the agenda. Alaska Department of Transportation Public Facilities will be holding a virtual open house regarding the Seward Highway milepost 105 to 109.5 Windy Corner to Rainbow Point project at 5:30 PM on, I do not see a date. There is a link here. Good staff, help advise on the date for that, please, if you have it. There's a link here again in the agenda. Okay. Introductions, presentations and reports. So item number one is service resolution for Erin Boone and Jerry Fox. So I will talk to this. Actually, I'm not sure, Jerry, is Jerry on?
I am.
You see Jerry. Well, I'd like to, I mean, there are lots of words in this, all of which I completely agree with. It's been a pleasure working with you for all my time until literally just a few weeks ago on GBOS. Thank you for chairing and teaching me how to chair. My mistakes and my own, all the good things come from you. And again, I appreciate all your work on so many different issues. I will read this into the record. And then we'll have a short discussion. Resolution of gratitude, Girdwood Board of Supervisors hereby resolves to honor GBOS member Jerry Fox. Whereas Jerry Fox was elected to serve the GBOS Seat A in the April 2015 and 2018 municipal elections. And whereas during this tenure, Jerry Fox has participated to the co-chair of GBOS and has served on the GBOS Liaison for Land Use Committee, Roads and Utilities, the Fire Department and Public Safety. And whereas during Jerry Fox's tenure, critical issues have arisen and require significant attention, including a palatable right-sized Girdwood-based solution to the policing issue when the Alaska State Troopers ended their longstanding service to Girdwood and the Seward Highway within municipal boundaries. A longstanding discussion with the Girdwood, with the municipality of Anchorage regarding the contract for services and appropriate funding for Girdwood Fire and Rescue EMS area-wide funding, which appears to now be heading towards mutual agreement and conclusion. And whereas Jerry Fox helped to guide community conversations and decision-making on many topics, ensuring that all opinions were heard and that the conversation maintained a respectful and considerate tone. And whereas Jerry Fox has provided a perspective to GBOS drawing on his past experience working on the North Slope, volunteering with tax help with AARP, assisting with tennis and other recreational volunteer activities, as well as many other volunteer activities while residing and raising a family in Girdwood. Therefore be it resolved that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors thanks Jerry Fox for his diligence, hard work and good humour in his years of service on the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, passed and approved, et cetera. So again, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mike.
Would anyone else like to speak to this?
Well, I'll say something.
Yeah, I was gonna say Jerry. I thought you would.
You know, it's been a great experience and I've enjoyed working with you and the rest of the board, Mike. You know, starting with Sam. Sam taught me how to be a chair and, you know, I got to know a lot more of my wonderful neighbors in Girdwood and, you know, how all the people of Girdwood really want to make the place better and I would encourage other people in Girdwood to run for GBOS. And I'd like to thank the board right now for their service and wish them well. And just say it was a great experience, so I would encourage others to do, to follow and volunteer also. Well, thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much, Jerry. And of course, you're welcome back to any point.
Thanks. It's kind of awkward.
Normally, we'd, normally we'd hand over a printed copy and take, take a photograph, but obviously in these times, we can't quite do that, but we'll, we'll have to have a, find a photographic opportunity at some point in the future. Jennifer?
Hey Jerry, I just wanted to say that watching from the sidelines, the effort on the police issue and also this, this ongoing struggle around the Fire Department and appropriate funding, it's been, it was heroic to watch, so thank you for that.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Jen.
Yeah, and I think the Fire Department, we, while the ink isn't completely dry, it's, it pretty much got fixed just about in your last meeting, so it was probably your whole time on the board, wasn't it? Plus a few years before that.
Yep, it was. You know, the other one that was longstanding was that Kyle helped with and so did Sam originally, was the crosswalk lights.
Oh, yes.
That was like five years to get those crosswalk lights in and Kyle even got them paid for by the DOT, so. Anyways, thanks.
Okay, we will, I think we have to actually formally vote on it, but I don't think there'll be much dissent. So let's do this as a roll call, just to be really formal. Kyle?
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0, or 4-0, excuse me.
Yeah. Again, thank you so much, Jerry. Really appreciate it. Really appreciate everything. And I still enjoy your sage wisdom when I call you from time to time, so thank you. Okay. We lost, we lost two great people. Sorry, that came out wrong. Two people left the board timed out at the last election. We gained two as well, so we also have a resolution for Erin Boone. So again, I think Erin, just want to check if Erin is on.
I'm here. Hi, Mike.
Excellent. Hi, Erin. So again, thank you so much for, for your work over the years. I'm gonna read this into the record as well. So a resolution of gratitude, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors hereby resolves to honor GBOS member Erin Boone. Whereas Erin Boone was first appointed to serve on the GBOS Seat B in 2016 and was elected in the 2018 municipal election. And whereas during this tenure, Erin Boone served to the GBOS liaisons for Girdwood Trails Committee, Girdwood Cemetery Committee and Girdwood Fire Department. And whereas during Erin Boone's tenure on the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, she has assisted in careful consideration of additional trails proposed by the Girdwood Mountain Bike Alliance and the Girdwood Nordic Ski Club and the long, and in the longstanding discussions with the municipality of Anchorage regarding the contract for services and appropriate funding for Girdwood Fire and Rescue EMS area-wide funding, which appears to now be heading towards mutual agreement and conclusion. And whereas Erin Boone has helped to guide committee discussions on these and other topics, always with a classic careful consideration and professional demeanor. And whereas Erin Boone has provided valuable perspective to GBOS, whether working through discussions related to trails, reviewing proposed budgets or participating in volunteer events, such as the installation of the tennis court backboards. And therefore be it resolved that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors thanks Erin Boone for a thoughtful and diligent service on the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, passed and approved, et cetera. So again, thank you so much, Erin, for all your service.
Thanks, Mike.
Would you like to say something?
Yeah, I'm definitely gonna miss working with you and the board, but I was really excited that people, more than one person for each position, wanted to be involved and that was just really encouraging because we haven't always seen that in the past, so I'm excited for the new board and I'm sure all of you will do a great job. I'm also gonna miss working with Kyle and Margaret, but I'm glad that I'll still get to see everyone around town.
Thank you. And I'd like to send the same comment as earlier. It's, it is possible for people to come back, so if you really miss us. Brianna?
I was going to say thank you, Erin, and it was nice to have you on my first year and also have your presence at all the trails, subcommittee and committee meetings. So I know you'll still be around and we'll see you outside. And yes, you're always welcome back. Thank you.
Thanks, Brianna.
Okay, we will do the formal vote. Okay, in roll call, please, Kyle.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, thank you very much indeed, Erin. Okay, I'd like to continue thanking our previous board members. We do have a very packed evening tonight. So move on to, unless anybody else knew, anybody else on the, in the meeting would like to say something, we'll move on to the next item. I should just offer, anybody else who'd like to make comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. So we'll move on to item number two, which is a presentation from Awake. We've been, we've had some feedback from a number of people in the community about issues around the domestic violence and support services that are available to Girdwood residents, because I mean, obviously we are somewhat, somewhat distant from the, from where the majority of services are physically located in, in Anchorage. So we asked if Awake could give a presentation tonight. Would you like to say anything? I know you've organized this, Brianna, would you like to say a little bit more about it?
Uh, I don't think so. I think I'll let Corinne speak. Thank you for the introduction, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome, Corinne. Actually, we're having some trouble hearing you. Seems to be very quiet.
It's muffled.
Okay, could you try again?
Okay, how's this?
It's a little bit louder, but still quite muffled.
How about now? Is it still muffled?
It's, it's a little louder, but there's some other noises. Let's try, let's try, try this and see if this works.
Okay. Alrighty, well hello everybody. My name is Corinne Williams and I'm a programs manager at Awake. I've been working at Awake for about two years now. Working in the shelter directly with our participants that was here. And so I was just asked to come on and give a brief overview of Awake's services and about domestic violence and just how we can help our community. I first want to start by defining what domestic violence is. So domestic violence happens when one person makes the choice to use physical, emotional, financial and/or sexual abuse to gain and maintain power and control in an intimate relationship. And so one in three women and one in four men have experienced some forms of physical violence by an intimate partner. These are statistics that come directly from Anchorage, from Alaska. About two out of five gays or sexual men have experienced abusive relationships as well. So 65% of all murders, suicides involve an intimate partner. And out of that 65%, 96% of the victims in these crimes are female. And so I want to go a little bit more into domestic violence and how, you know, this comes about in a relationship or just how it manifests in a life. So domestic violence is a learned behaviour. It's not caused by illness, genetics, drugs or alcohol, stress, anger, mental illness. It's not caused by the victim's behaviour. It's not caused by problems in the relationship. It's important to remember that all of these are just contributing factors to that behaviour, but they're not the origin of the abusive behaviour. And so domestic violence is always a choice because it's a behaviour that's learned. The choice is to abuse. So perpetrators of domestic violence choose who to abuse, they choose how to abuse, they choose where to abuse, and they choose when the abuse starts and stops. And so I just want to go over a few forms of abuse. We know that there's physical abuse, emotional abuse, sexual abuse and financial abuse. And so with physical abuse, you see hitting, pushing, punching, nothing that's physical on the person. There's also restraining and also strangulation. But I just want to touch on strangulation because that's something that we see a lot. Strangulation is a type of asphyxiation. It often does not leave marks. So this is something that we see a lot where, you know, first responders show up to the scene, the, the victim is claiming that they were just strangled, but the abuser has the one that has the marks, defensive marks, defensive wounds. And so it appears most often that the victim was the aggressor. And so with strangulation, it's the epitome of power and control when it comes to domestic violence. To understand how serious that is, unconsciousness may occur within seconds of strangulation and death within minutes. The strangulation is part of an ongoing pattern of escalating abuse. And so somebody asks, why would you say it's the epitome of power and control? The victim's life is literally in the abuser's hands. And ultimately, the abuser may not be trying to kill the victim, but rather show them that they can if they want to. And so there's emotional abuse, where, you know, degrading remarks, intimidation, manipulation. There's sexual abuse, which is rape, rough sex, forced pregnancy or abortion. And then there's financial abuse, which is more common than many may think. Which is not giving your, the victim any access to household funds or controlling their money, checking the receipts, or even loss of employment due to the abuser's behaviour, showing up at their job, calling repeatedly. And so with those forms of abuse, I just kind of want to touch on the cycle of abuse. And so abuse isn't just linear. It's not, you know, one day, things just happen. There's a cycle that is, you know, for some, a never-ending cycle. But with the great services of our community, we have intervention and prevention efforts. And so the cycle of abuse, it starts off in the honeymoon phase where everything is good, you know, there's promises of change, there's those, I won't do that again. A lot of promises of, of, you know, changing behaviour. And so once that honeymoon phase starts to die down, then you have that tension building phase where, you know, the victim may feel like they're walking on eggshells, they don't know what they're gonna say that's gonna set them off. You know, they just find themselves really not knowing what's going to happen based off of everyday life conversations. And then that tension phase leads to explosive things. That's where our first responders see, you know, assaults. That's where we see all of the physical forms of abuse and even death. And so when it comes to assisting and helping survivors of domestic violence, we have to understand that they had complex experiences and those complex experiences required complex needs. And so trauma survivors may have complex needs, often experiencing co-occurring conditions, are often misidentified as difficult to treat and as a result are not served well by treatment systems. And so that's where we have different agencies here in Anchorage, including Awake. Awake Services, we offer emergency safe shelter. We maintain a 65-bed shelter where women, men and children may seek help whenever they are in danger. We offer crisis intervention and we have a 24-hour crisis line. And so we have, our phone is answered 24 hours a day by trained advocates always onsite. We offer education and support groups. Awake offers various education and support groups, most of the days out of the week, until COVID hit. But we offer a wide range of topics, you know, we even have an onsite clinician who does some healing and emotional awareness support groups. Awake has a transitional housing facility called Harmony House. So we offer transitional housing and we provide low-cost housing for up to 18 months. And that's just for a single woman. We also have legal advocacy at the Boni Courthouse seven days a week to help protect the waters, applying for pro, pro bono legal services and accompanying petitioners to hearings. Awake has rapid rehousing programs. And so some participants may qualify for permanent housing programs moving forward and reclaiming hope. These programs help survivors move into permanent housing and remain in this program for at least up to six months after safe housing is obtained. Awake also partners with South Central Foundation. We have the Willows Way Program where, you know, some women from rural areas often, you know, function better in an intimate setting, so we have smaller safe houses for those, you know, however they choose. Awake also has a program called Alaska Domestic Violence Sexual Assault Intervention Project. And this program helps participants financially to overcome the challenges they, they may face when it comes to leaving an abusive relationship. That is often the, you know, most dangerous time for a survivor to leave a relationship because there's been a lot of manipulation and control throughout that whole entire relationship. And so with this program, we're able to help our participants financially. And we also offer prevention and education. And so we have public awareness about domestic violence and how to decrease the violence in Anchorage. We have a trauma-informed clinician that's onsite, so our participants are able to practice some counselling sessions and, you know, be able to work through those trauma-headed events. And Awake also partners with the Kibbutz Tribal Council. We have our co-located advocacy coordinator who's responsible for providing screenings, referrals, short-term case management and advocacy services to PIs, children, women and men who experience domestic violence. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One question I have for you is what is the best way to access services?
So yes, if anybody or, you know, if you know someone or if you just want to refer them to our services, I can put some information in the chat box, but all they have to do is call and, you know, pretty much say that they are wanting to receive our services. There's a five to 10-minute screening involved and then we can see if they qualify for our residential services or non-residential services. Either way, they have access to all the services that I just listed and spoke on. Once they receive our services, then they, they can get all the resources that we have available to them.
Thank you. What is the phone number?
Our crisis line is 272-0100.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from supervisors?
I just want to thank you, Corinne, for your time and the phone number there, because we have the chat ring, I think, so I appreciate that information and anything else perhaps we can send in a minute if it's sent to one of us after the meeting. after the meeting.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, Brian. I could definitely shoot you an email with all the resources that I have, um, for my presentation as well as our contact information.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Okay, move on to next item. Which is item number three, uh, HLB presentation regarding the RFP for potential development of HLB parcels 611, 616 and 617, the area commonly known as Holton Hills. And we have someone from HLB ready to give that presentation.
Hi, Mike. This is Robin Ward.
Hi, Robin.
So we wanted to let, thank you. We appreciate, uh, being able to just give a short presentation. Uh, this will be a duplicate presentation for many of you that were at Land Use Committee last Monday. Um, we have issued an RFP for development on parcels in Girdwood. For some background, we received two applications for disposal of these properties. And the normal process when we receive an application for disposal is to determine that it is surplus to municipal needs. Then we obtain a commercial appraisal and whatever that, a commercial appraisal comes in sets the minimum bid for a seal competitive bid for disposal or sale of properties is how we handle those, both in HLB and in regular real estate. This is a little different situation in the fact that this is a very large parcel. A considerable amount of it is wetlands. It lacks infrastructure. So we really did not feel that the traditional competitive bid was going to work and we had several applications. So we determined it would be best in this situation to issue an RFP, which is a request for proposals, soliciting interest, uh, in developing parcels. And we wrote this very broadly. Propposers can say, we only want to save, this is, thank you, Kyle. Uh, this shows the, um, different zoning in the parcels. So it's a combination of different zones. And the blue, Shelley, if I'm correct, is open space. Is that correct? Or wetlands?
The, the purple is open space and the blue, um, outside of the orange area is recreational reserve.
Okay, sounds good. So a proposer, as broadly as we wrote it, a proposer could say, um, I want a certain five acres and they can designate which five acres, or it could be 20 acres, it could be 50 acres, it could be the whole entire thing. Say, we would like to develop this. This is how we would like to develop it. And then they can propose whether or not they want participation from the municipality in the form of a partnership, concessionary financing, where we would finance some of the sale of the parcel. We're really trying to be as flexible and broad as we can be looking for development. It's go, it's unlikely that anyone's going to be able to develop this without at least some collaboration or consideration from the municipality because of the lack of, of roads, um, and, uh, water sewer, uh, so on. So, um, the closing date for our proposals is June 7th. Kyle, can you, uh, roll up the next slide? So this gives everyone an idea of where this is located. Again, it's a large parcel. I think Shelley, it's what is it, 150, 160 acres? And I think there's about 90 acres of developable land there.
Correct. Yeah, with not, not extending all the way up Crow Creek Road, but on the last slide, that area is about 150 acres with about, I think, 90 of it developable.
So we, as, as I said, we presented, uh, Land Use, uh, last week and I think there was a pretty large crowd, probably 70 people or more. But I will open it up for questions. If you have questions, someone who's maybe never seen this before, this is all on our website. And Shelley has loaded a link with all of the background information from the Holton Hills project, which, which gives, um, tremendous background, uh, information on at least a portion of this property. So, um, can I, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Robin. First of all, I'll open up to any of the supervisors who have any questions on this. Okay, um, I don't see any hands. So I'll open up to the public. I see Crystal Hook has a question. Is your hand? Crystal, go ahead.
Uh, a comment first. The parcel, I believe, is 450 acres. Uh, one of the parcels is 22 acres, I think. The other one's 28 acres. And then the largest one is 404 acres. So now how much of that is developable is another question, but the three parcels combined is 450 acres.
Okay.
Okay, um, was that what you wanted to say, Crystal? Do you have anything to add?
Oh, you know, I have plenty to add, but I, I won't take up too much time in this, in this meeting.
Okay, um, so my question, Robin, is, um, what happens next after the closing date? What are the next steps?
We, we have an evaluation committee. We will, um, share the proposals with the evaluation committee so that they can score them. Uh, the evaluation committee will have at least two, and I'm thinking maybe there's three, uh, Girdwood residents on it. So we do have some input from Girdwood residents along with, uh, municipal department staff that have expertise in development. So, uh, once the, um, evalu, evaluation committee has scored the proposals, we'll determine whether or not to award that. If we have more than one proposal or if we have multiple proposals, we may put several of them together if they're only requesting smaller parcels. So that you may, we may award several in different locations in the property. But if it's not economically feasible, it doesn't pencil. We may not award any. So there's really no action item yet until we determine whether or not any of the proposals are going to be, um, feasible economically, um, before, you know, we'll be back. If we award one, then it will start that process of approvals. Cause it will need to probably be plotted and possibly rezoned.
That's what I was going to ask. So if, um, if you do award, um, any of the proposals or there's some, um, combination proposal, um, there would be more public process following that then?
Correct. The, if we determine to, um, award that, the first step will be the HLB Advisory Commission.
Okay, that's a, that's also a public meeting and we have at least one representative from Girdwood on that body.
Correct.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Uh, Lani?
Hi, sorry, I, um, couldn't hear everything just from noise in my house, but I did have a question if it, hopefully hasn't been answered already, but I know, Robin, you're very well aware of the housing problems in Girdwood and I personally am very worried that these developments will go forward without, um, consideration about what's happened to ski towns and other states in the lower 48 and the problems it has created without having housing affordable for teachers, fire department workers, normal people other than, um, higher end income earners. And wondering how we have those protections put in place with anything going forward on this potential development. Thank you.
And it just depends on the proposals. Again, we may not award, uh, any of them if they don't meet the goals. Housing is our goal, to be frank, and affordable housing is the priority. So as we go through the proposals and we hope we, we do receive some, uh, we're going to be looking at that. Uh, and, and they would probably receive higher points for more affordable housing. Now, when we're talking affordable housing, sometimes we're talking denser housing. So sometimes there's a sacrifice there. So just be aware that, you know, we're going to have to really look at how to balance that.
Okay, so the priority then for this would be affordable housing versus just housing in general, you just said?
Correct. Affordable housing is always our priority in Girdwood because it's almost unattainable.
Thank you.
Actually, what, can I just follow up on that question? What do you mean by affordable? I know it means different people, different things to different people.
It's exactly right. Someone has to define it and believe me, there's, uh, multiple interpretations of what affordable is. That's exactly right. It, most people consider affordable subsidized, but not everyone considers that.
Okay, so is subsidy part of the, um, discussions? Is that something that would only come from the applications themselves or is there something that would be proposed by the municipality?
Proposals themselves. They would have to propose subsidized housing and, and, and let us know how they were going to achieve that.
Okay, um, I see a question from Kelly. Kelly Kesselmann. Go ahead.
Uh, my question is like, who exactly is representing Girdwood and like, what the acres goes into? So who is the person that is going to say that these acres are okay to develop with, eh, with Girdwood in mind?
Uh, Kelly, are you talking about on the evaluation committee? I guess I didn't understand. Okay. You, you're talking about who is on the evaluation committee from Girdwood?
Yes.
We, we cannot disclose that because of experte communication. So we do not let the evaluation committee members, we don't make those public until after the evaluations because we don't want experte contact.
Okay, so don't you think that like the actual Girdwood community should have a say instead of like just these three people that you picked out of the community? Shouldn't it be voted?
Well, Kelly, all this does is start a process. So if we determine that we're going to award one of the proposals, then we start the public process. It goes to the HLB, our Heritage Land Bank Advisory Commission first. And then it will go to, uh, I would assume it would then come to LUC and then to GBOS for recommendations for zoning, plating and development.
Okay, thank you. Um, Michelle Weston, go ahead.
Hi there. Um, I just want to bring up the concept as we look at, uh, more and more development starting in Girdwood. Um, something that was brought up, uh, which is a Canadian model, which was, uh, brought up, I believe, uh, to the municipality years ago, probably 10, 15 years ago, when I was at, actually working at the land bank. Uh, the idea of asset management. So as you can increase and develop areas, you provide for adequate increases to the, um, public, uh, services that impact with large-scale development. So, um, you know, as we put more and more house, new housing developments in Girdwood and look at other things, um, you know, that does have an impact on fire response. And that is more people move in. And so a Canadian model, which maybe hasn't been looked at by the municipality for quite some time, is to look at if we're developing affordable housing or that, we, uh, add and the developer pays for a relatively small increase in, in the, um, daycare, uh, assets in the community and then also in fire protection. Uh, so, uh, and police. So just, uh, just wanted to put that out there. And then, um, you know, uh, I have a, a four, apparently affordable development going in across from my house. Uh, and apparently it was, uh, it's been listed at 650,000, but it was marketed to P and Z as affordable housing for Girdwood. So, um, just a reminder that what is affordable housing for some people is, uh, different, means something else for other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Good point.
Yeah, I think that the, the point about the development opposite you, uh, Michelle, is that, uh, I think they use the word affordable, but they didn't do anything to either define it or, um, do any of the, attract any of the subsidies that typically come along with affordable development. So I think that was more of a marketing term than a term of art. Kelly, you have, your hand up again. Go ahead.
Hi, um, so what I would propose is that, um, people, as far as like, I've lived here for a really long time in Girdwood and I think that, um, the people that are planning out for what we need in this, um, community, because we are a neighborhood and a community, um, people that have been here for a long time. So like, is there a way that we can propose that certain humans become part of this group that decides our culture and like, it's a voted on thing where they become like the person that is in charge, the people that are in charge, that's voted on by the people that make this claim of like, um, how to develop our community and like, who's in charge of like approving the RFPs and like doing all of these things.
Boy, that, that's a tough question, Kelly. We have a brand-new administration coming in and that may be something the new administration, you know, that's a, that is a governance issue that would probably start at, in the mayor's office. So that might be the place to start is talking to the new mayor about that.
Mrs. Shelley, I would also back up that it's just basic procurement ethics, um, that, um, potential proposers cannot have contact with the people evaluating, um, said proposals.
Thanks, Shelley and Robin. Um, I, there's a partial, I guess there's a partial answer to Kelly's question as well. I mean, part of the, part of the governance is, um, the community itself has a say in how we're developed. And that's something that comes through in our comprehensive plan, which we're in the process of rewriting. Uh, our current plan dates from 1995. So it, it does talk about housing and it does talk about housing affordability, but obviously we have a completely different scale of problem now to what we had 25, uh, 26 years ago. So it's a little unfortunate that the, the RFP and the timing of this, um, is before we've had the chance to update the plan, but the chances are any of these large development will be happening while the plan, while the new plan comes into, uh, effect. So, you know, there are, there are things, there are things we can do and push forward and make sure the community has a say and has policy, you know, the development has to follow the policies that we put in place. The timing isn't perfect here, but, uh, we do have a number of things in our public process which will enable us to have a say both within the HLB process and, uh, in the broader planning process. Brianna, you have your hand up.
I do. Thank you. Uh, recently I looked up online through the Muni site and when I wasn't in Girdwood yet, a, several, um, a few dozen community members in Girdwood took a long time and it did a really great, uh, Crow Creek Road land use study and it was published in 2006. So I encourage anyone interested to find it. And it's really detailed with a plan that, uh, at the time, the Girdwood residents, and many of them still live here, would envision for a lot of this area. Thank you.
Bren?
Thank you, Mike. Um, Brianna, thanks for that, um, reference to the 2006 Crow Creek Neighborhood, plan that got put together. I recall going through, uh, the motions on that plan. And question to Robin is, is that how much of the RFP is following, um, what was laid out in that 2006 neighborhood plan?
Well, I think I'll let Shelley knows that plan pretty well. I think I'll let her answer that.
Sure. Um, so at the time, um, what you see on the screen is, is what Girdwood wanted as far as zoning and density. Um, we all know that ultimately that didn't pencil. Um, so it is likely that there will be, um, you know, a, a change to more denser development. I'm sorry, more dense development, um, in these proposals and that would require an amendment to that plan. Um, and the comprehensive plan. So, or the area plan. Um, so I, you know, we don't know until we see the proposals. But it would be something that the community would have been put on.
Thank, thank you for that answer. So I'd say that it would be that we're, we're operating on a more recent set of plans than the 1990 area-wide planning.
Yeah, that would, that would probably be good, right? Um, the other thing I would say about the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan, um, you know, across the street and up a little bit was, um, are probably our biggest piece of multi-family property. I'm not sure why they, why it was put out Crow Creek Road without utilities, but it was, but that was taken up by the cemetery or will be taken up by the cemetery. So, um, you know, we all, we all know that there's really, really limited multi-family, um, properties or zoning in Girdwood. properties or zoning in Girdwood. And of course, that hopefully will be addressed through the area planner. There will be recommendations about that. But I do think that we'll probably see some proposals with more dense development.
Thank you for those answers.
Sure. Thanks, Brian.
So one last question for me. So when when should we expect to hear? What's happening next? When we should we expect to hear what the proposals that came through are?
Mike, probably by, I would say by the end of June. I think it'll take us a little while for to get the committee together to score everything and then determine whether or not it's feasible to award any of those. So I would think that, what do you think, Shelley? I think we can let everyone know by the end of June.
Hopefully, with the change in the schedule, we'll have to see what the evaluation committee schedule is, but that should be doable.
Okay, I have a question from N Ellis.
Yeah, hey, Mike. This is Nathan Ellis. I kind of jumped in here a little bit late, so I don't know if this was covered. But the timeline on this for these developers to come up with this proposal. Could you lay that out for us real fast? And if you already covered that, I apologize, but I, right when you said that this was, you'll be known by the end of June. Man, I feel like I just found out about this probably a month, maybe two months ago. So could you, could you expand on the timeline of when this was conceptualized and 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 when was this, this was put out to developers?
Do you have those dates, Shelley? I know that we we sent, we sent it out to, we have a standard list of developers all across the municipality and then we specifically targeted. I don't know how many people, but it was a lot of people in Girdwood. So and what?
Um, I believe that the announcement went out April 6th. We received an application from the Community Land Trust for donation or less than fair market value disposal of this land to them in November. Then we received an application, I believe, at the beginning of February from a developer. And so we constructed the the RFP and put it out April 6th. And initially, we would have closed proposal, the proposal deadline last week, but we extended it in order to allow some more robust proposals to come through. As for development timeline, it's going to be a pretty long timeline. There's a lot of work that has to be done. Not only between the evaluation committee, but, you know, deciding if we're going towards something, who we would award something to, how we would structure that deal. You know, so I I'd say constructions are ways off. And hopefully by then lumber prices will have gone down. I hope that helps.
Yeah, it does. And just to kind of follow up on that. So from from how I see it, you put that out to a general RFP proposal around April 6th to some larger developers, right? Which is smart. And then what we're looking at like nine, maybe 10 weeks tops, maybe less for these developers to put together an RFP. That seems very rushed to me for for something of this magnitude. And for these people to do their actual due diligence and put together a good plan that's going to be not only pencil financially, but it's something that the community wants. And I was just kind of curious why this short timeline? And what was the motivation to start from from April 6th to June? That seems like a pretty fast jump to me. And I'll take my answer. I'll just mute myself.
Okay, Robin, I'll catch that one. The initial timeline was actually extracted from our previous RFP in downtown Anchorage. So it's, it was a timeline that's been achieved in the past. You know, developers are used to putting together proposals like that. And especially this one, there is so much data available. Whereas normally they wouldn't have any of that. So we we just about doubled the timeline. And, you know, have provided a treasure trove of information. Robin.
And frankly, if we get close to our closing date and we have proposers who say we need another week or two, we certainly would consider another extension if we need to. We we want proposals. We want ideas.
Okay, thank you. I see one last question from Crystal. We're gonna have to keep moving. So, Crystal, go ahead.
I just, I just want to make one, one more correction. The Community Land Trust submitted an application in December. It wasn't November. And then I'll just state that it was disappointing that H L B wasn't more willing to discuss a potential partnership and how that might work for the community before receiving the second application, which was several months. So it was a disappointment and hopefully we can get to a solution that the community is happy about. Thank you.
Do you want to respond to that, Robin?
We did respond. We asked for a list of information that we needed. We did receive some of it, but we did not receive enough to be able to actually sit down and start negotiating. So it wasn't that we didn't want to, but we needed a little more information from the Community Land Trust as far as organizational documents, financial statements and so on, before we were able to sit down and and discuss with them. And I agree with Crystal. I'm hoping that the RFP will provide that anyway.
Okay, thank you very much. We've only covered three out of 26 items tonight, so I am going to push on. Thank you very much, Robin and Shelley. We're going to move on to item number four, which is update on G B O S seats and supervisor roles. You actually, I will start on this. So at as you probably know, we had two, two people didn't run for reelection for G B O S and there were two competitive races in the April municipal elections and Jennifer Wingard, one seat A and Amanda Sassy, one seat B. We have since assigned our roles across the groups, as we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. So Jennifer is covering public safety. Amanda is covering roads and utilities. I'm covering land use. Brianna is covering parks and recreation, the cemetery and the fire departments, as she gets an extra large load. Brianna and I are both co-chairs. We also had a resignation, the previous holder of seat C. James Glover decided he couldn't, he couldn't continue in that role. So we had a vacancy. We put out a notice for nominations or applications and we received one application from Guy Wade, who actually ran in the seat A election in April. And last week, we had a special meeting where we considered that application and voted to nominate him and put his name forward to the mayoral office for appointment to seat C. Guy is actually on the phone, if you just want to say hello.
Yeah, Mike, I'm here.
Yep. So again, I can hear you. The process of appointment takes takes several weeks. We're not sure when it will be complete. Kyle may have an updated timescale to that. But just like to say, thank you very much for both running an election and putting your name forward for nomination.
Yeah, you bet. Well, I appreciate the vote of confidence from the committee. And I'm just looking forward to, yeah, I'm getting in and working with you guys. I've sat on the sidelines and watched for a few years. And so I'm, yeah, I'm ready to jump in and help out where I can and and learn from some of the people who've been there a while. Okay?
Thanks, Guy. Would any of the other superiors like to speak to this? Or staff?
Yeah, Mike, we're, we've, we'll be submitting the application to the mayor. We just got the resume updated from Guy. So then the mayor process. So it would be at least two assembly meetings before we probably see it get on the agenda and the assembly approves it.
Okay, so it'll be sometime in June. Excellent. Thank you. I see a hand from Jerry, I think.
Yeah, I just want to say to reiterate what you said, Mike, and thank Guy for stepping up and I appreciate his volunteering.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, any other comments? Not seeing any, so we will push on. Item number five legislative report. So is, I think Senator Roger Holland is online or Representative James Kaufman? And then we'll move to assembly meeting, assembly members after that. Hi.
Roger Holland here, Roger Holland. And I see I have the chat closed, but I, and it looks like the screen's dead right now, too. So, but I tell you what, if anybody thinks they know what's going on here in Juneau in the last couple of days, I think they'd be surprised. We've, I pretty much got everything resolved in the Education Committee a couple of weeks ago, just in time to pick up the Judiciary Committee. And we just got finished like one last item today. But everybody's just talking about the budget these days, budget, budget. I I wouldn't know if we're heading home in three days or 10 days after three days or 30 days after three days, just because everything's still up in the air right now. But if you ever have a question, I won't keep y'all too night. If you ever have a question about what, what the hell was Roger thinking when he voted this way or that way? I welcome you to send me a text or an email to 351-8277, 351-8277, or you can just email me. But I think a lot of times things look very different from here looking out as it does from the outside looking in. But that's about all I have tonight. If there are any questions. Oh, wait, I didn't realize I had that thing shut. I thought y'all had the screen off. But yeah, if you have any questions, that'll be fine. I'd take some tonight. But if you don't think it's interesting for everybody, just text them to me at 351-8277 or call me and I'll answer them just to you.
Thank you. Actually, I do see a hand up in the audience. So Katie, go ahead.
Thank you so much for joining us. I'm working with Latitude 61, the Friends of Girdwood Valley Trails, and I just wanted to sort of throw in, and I've sent you a letter, but also some support for the Alaska Long Trail. I know it's something that will work its way through several committees, but I wanted to make sure you hear our voice here in Girdwood. We are very interested. And we'd love to support it.
I I've gotten to take a preliminary look at the Alaska Long Trail. I think it's a really interesting project. But honestly, I've, I've just been buried lately. But no, it is a, it is a very interesting looking project. I could imagine I could pretty easily support it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Senator. Are there any represent, anybody for representing James Kaufman here? Seeing anyone? Okay.
This is, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Hi.
I'm Matthew Harvey.
Hi, Matthew.
James Kaufman, Chief of Staff. So I kind of came to represent him for the night. Fortunately, he couldn't be here. But I I kind of just echo a lot of what Senator Holland's saying. We're wrapping up with the 120 day session. Ends on Wednesday and the governor's called a 30 day special session to immediately proceed succeed that. But it's coming up. We're not sure how long that special session is going to be and if the agenda that the governor set for that special session will, I guess, be completed. So we're not totally sure, as Senator Holland said, whether it'll be five days after Wednesday or 30 days after Wednesday, but it'll be sometime in between then. In the next 30 days, if if it goes the entire time, is going to be focused on the permanent fund proposals which are out there and the power cost equalization program proposals that are out there and kind of how those tie in together. So we're kind of just wrapping up the committee process and doing all that we can to kind of get those to a point where we can close them off until middle of January and well, on top of the permanent fund and the power cost equalization, it's finishing up the budget. So we're on the House side, we're waiting for the Senate Finance Committee to finalize that operating capital budget that they have and and send them back over to us. So we can either agree or disagree with the changes that they made from what what the House sent over to the Senate. And then later in the year, the governor also noticed a 30 day special session kind of tentatively for August and that one was to deal with a possible spending cap, new revenues and the federal funding and where some of that federal funding would go. I actually, on on that note, I did have a little update from the Senate Finance Co-Chairs Office is that in the memo from regarding the federal funds and what some of those are earmarked for, there was federal funding earmarked for childcare. So we kind of were lobbying for some of that to move towards Little Bear's childcare facility. It is a little bit larger project, so we're not sure yet and probably won't know until later in the year when we get to that second special session. But there is some of that federal money earmarked for some stuff like that. So just a little update on that project. That's all I have. I can give you guys a Senator Holland, I think the chat's closed, but the rep's email is rep.james.caufman@akledge.gov. And yeah, love to hear from constituents. So we hear from who's actually in the district and what we need to focus on. So thank you guys for having me.
Okay, thank you. Well, I knew the, there was some, I wouldn't say delay, but the the budget perhaps wasn't worked on quite as quickly as it would have been in other years, because there was this potential federal money coming down the pike. Were there any surprises in the in the treasury guidance that came along with that? Was it pretty much as expected?
Well, the the operating budget was on the House floor. So the House version of the operating budget was on the House floor for like the final vote, the day that that guidance came out. And we, we're not totally sure yet, but we're pretty sure that we don't meet the requirement to get it all in one slug. So we're, we're going to get it tronched in 50%, 50%. But right now, the, well, I guess the Senate has changed it to fix that, but the way the House had it when it passed the House floor was that it was 70% being spent this year and 30% being spent next year. So that got, that had to get revised in the Senate side, but that's one of, I think, many little changes on top of that big change were made in the Senate side, a lot of fund source changes and things like that. That was the biggest, the biggest thing was knowing that we're going to get 50% now, 50% next year because of how how we qualify as a state.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other questions. So I'm not sure. Do we have any representatives from the assembly here? I didn't see John or Suzanne online, but they might be calling in. Okay. We also had a communication from Kelly Lessons, who is on the Anchorage School Board. And actually is is liaison with the Girdwood School. She couldn't make tonight. She she sent some details, which will be in the minutes. And she does intend to join us for future G B O S sessions. So we will have a scoreboard representative here as well most months. Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to item number six, Agenda Item L U C 2103-05, Case 2021-0067, Presentation of Proposed Long Plat for Alpine View Estates, Track 1 and Lots 1 to 7, Tim Cabana. Let's do this presentation, Tim.
Yeah, yeah, you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, this is just another, I don't know, I'm a little confused at how this process worked. I I was kind of stuck in a catch 22 where I needed to be on the agenda before I could get the case number and I needed the case number before I could get on the agenda. We worked past that and we got on and this is just another introduction. This is the official introduction of this. And it's, it's actually a short plat. And they've, they've kind of, I don't know what happened in the Muni. They've been fighting me since September on this. And then all of a sudden, it's fine. So they turned it into a short plat and it's scheduled to go in front of whoever on June 21st. And now I guess there's no issues at all. So and all it amounts to is seven lots and a track and straightening out the drunken zoning line. And everybody from Muni is all happy with the way it looks now. That's, that's pretty much it. Unless anybody's got any questions. It's just a requirement of, I think, the rezone to, to introduce it again.
You, you just said rezone. Is it actually, is the zoning changing at all, or is this the, this existing GR4?
Nothing's changing, and the zoning thing's kind of a silly thing anyway, because it's GR4 and GR4SL, which really is a sort of an insignificant difference. GR4SL, you can put four to eight units per acre on GR4, you can put four to eight units per acre on, or you can go for a conditional use for up to 20. But you can't, you can't put over 10 on an acre anyway, and, and satisfy all the other requirements anyway. So it's really, it's really, it's kind of a, it's kind of a nothing, nothing rezone.
So I know there were few things that came up in land use about the, so this, is this exactly the same plat as the last one you presented at land use?
I believe so. It looks exactly the same. Yeah, and you can just see where the, the, the little, I call it the drunken zoning line, where it says current zoning line. And it goes down and up and down and up, you know, like somebody stumbling over to the brewery. And then we just, all we did was straighten it out. So there's no gain or loss of zoning area, it's about a wash.
Okay, so I recall the questions that came up during that, there was the question about the road easement, and do you want to just speak to that briefly? Or potential road easement?
Yeah, they, I, I, the Muni is still holding on to this new Gerwood Access Road and making me put that road easement in there. So we, we put that road easement in there. I asked them to to put a, a little note on there that it goes away after five years if, you know, the road is never built. And they asked me to take that off. So I took it off, and I talked to the, to the both the people down there at the Muni, Dave and Michelle about that, and said it's kind of silly if they do away with the road and still have that on there. So they've kind of promised me that they will take it off. We'll see if they ever do, if the, if the road is, is taken out of the rewrite of the Gerwood area plan.
Okay, and the, I think the other question which I remember I had, I'm not sure if I completely answered the answer, was these lots are all around about 30,000 square feet. My understanding of the, of the GR4 zoning is that they won't be available for single family homes, they're all multifamily homes, is that correct? It has to be smaller lots for it to be a single family home?
No, it doesn't matter. Well, you can't be single family because the, in, in Chapter 9, it specifically says existing lots of under 20,000 square feet. So these lots are not existing, so they do not qualify for that. So they are not allowed to be single family lots.
Sorry, you're saying they're not allowed to be single family, so these have to be multifamily lots? Is that the right way to interpret it?
That's what it says in Chapter 9.
Okay.
And you can see the square footage on them, 36, 35, 29, 29, you know.
Understood. Okay, I did see a question from Shelley, but I should ask first if there's any, any supervisors have any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Did you have a question, Shelley? I saw your hand was up briefly.
You went over it. I was just gonna say that this isn't exactly went through, what went through before, before the road paralleled the Aliaska Highway and then headed south. So this is a different variation of what we saw before.
Yeah, I think there was several that went through LUC. This is, I think this is the one I saw the last time.
Yeah, this one's been heard before. There's about 10. This is drawing number 10 or something, and the last several have looked just like this. The only difference between this one and one of the last ones is it was eight lots instead of seven. But they, with the eight lots, they, they wouldn't, two of the lots would not meet the three to one width to depth without a variance.
Okay, so the next steps here are, it goes in front of, is it plating?
You know, I don't even, I think the next step is it just goes to, yeah, plating or something on the 21st. And, and it's a short plat, so they're really, I don't think there's any other steps really going on here.
So does that have a public hearing on that date? I think it must.
Yeah, as far as I know, with a short plat, there, I don't, I'm not even asking for any, any, you know, votes or anything on this as far as this goes. So, and this, this came from them, you know, they fought me on this for a long time, and then all of a sudden they said it's fine and made it a short plat and pretty much okayed it.
Okay, any other questions from the public? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, thanks, Tim. So we will move on to item number seven, which is the Gerish Library Report. Claire.
Hi, hello. I'm Claire Agnew. I'm the Scott and Wesley Gerish Library Manager. I want to talk to you guys today about Summer Discovery. It has started. And everybody can sign them up for a log where you'll track your reading and your activities. Kids get a book when they sign up and when they finish. Adults will get a nice tote bag and when they finish. And everybody will enter into the grand prize. Gerish Library participants have a very good odds of winning the grand prize because we have fewer people, so please do participate, enter, come by the library to pick up your log, all ages. You can do it as a group, as a family, by yourself. It's fun and keeps you reading during the summer. This summer, we have two programs scheduled for kids. They'll be outside, so it is weather dependent. We will cancel a program one hour prior to starting if the weather's not good, if it's rainy or super windy. So call us to make sure if it's going on or check our Facebook. Our phone number is 343-4024. Facebook is facebook.com/aplgarish. The two programs we have, Wednesdays noon, is our Summer Discovery Program. So that's geared toward school age kids, and each week we'll have a different theme. That starts Wednesday, May 26th at noon, and it will be a dance party. So hopefully the weather's good. So we can hang out and dance and blow bubbles. Actually, no blowing bubbles, we've got machines because we don't want to blow bubbles at people anymore. Okay, bubbles dancing Wednesday at 12, starting May 26th. And then Family Storytime, we will also be doing outside, and that starts on Friday, May 28th. So every Friday at 11, outside the library lawn is Family Storytime. Again, it's all weather dependent, so look outside your window, check with us before you head over. And then I have some personal news. I've submitted my resignation and I will be leaving the library. May 20th is my last day, so please come by and say hi and bye. It's been really great working here, and I wanted to thank the GBOs for all their support and for Margaret and Kyle for all of their support. And yeah, it's been a great six years, and as far as I know, I'll still be in Gerwood, so I'll see you around. But I just wanted to let you all know that news as well. And that's all I have, unless people have questions.
Thank you very much, Claire. It's, it's kind of bittersweet of, you know, you've been a great librarian, and it would be a pity to lose you, but I know you have other plans. So congratulations on your future. Any questions from any other supervisors or any members of the public? Okay, I see a question from Kaylee. Go ahead.
Not really a question. I just wanted to say, Claire, you've been a wonderful librarian, and we will miss you in that role. And obviously, I'm very excited about you moving forward, but we'll miss you. Thank you.
Oh, thanks, Kaylee. Thanks, Mike. I appreciate it.
And did you say the 20th was your last, last day?
May 28th.
May 28th, okay.
It's a Friday. It's also First Day Storytime, so come watch me do Storytime. I'm excited.
Thank you. It gives me just over a week to finish off the overdue book and then.
Oh, Mike, Mike. Oh my God, we have to talk off camera. All right, thanks, guys.
Private joke. Thank you so much, Claire. Appreciate everything. Bye. Okay. Item number eight, Gerwood Service Area Report, Kyle.
Yeah, I'll try to keep this brief. Our report is in the packet, and if you don't know about these meeting packets, they are on the GBOs website. You go to muni.org backslash GBOs, and you should be able to get all the information that we present here tonight. But just give some quick highlights. In early June, on Wednesday, June 2nd and Thursday, June 3rd, we are doing planting of all the planters around town. This is an annual event, which is highly dependent on volunteers coming out and taking a planter. We provide all the flowers, we provide the pattern on how the flowers are supposed to go in. And all you use, get your hands dirty and get the flowers in and help to beautify Gerwood. So we still have a few spots left, and we want to say thank you to everybody who's signed up so far. But there are some out there, so if you'd like to get on that, feel free to reach out to Margaret, I, and we can get that taken care of. As mentioned earlier, we are looking for one more seasonal caretaker. We have two right now. So if you know anybody, have them apply, and it will be a seasonal position till about mid-September. And we have our cram-crowd hosts coming in for the season, Hart and Kelly and their family. They'll be at the park in, in the camper host, or the park host location. So we're thankful to have them. They lived here during the winter with us and are going to be living in their camper this summer out there. So as I said, everything is sort of listed here as updates to what's going on. The parks, switching over the roads. Spring operations have begun, and we're just waiting for the green light from the municipal engineer to start on our spring maintenance. A lot of the roads around here were still seeping a lot of water out from the winter meltout. And so it looks like this week we should be able to get going with that. So we'll do spring grading, dust control with calcium chloride, get that going. And then after that, we're going to be working on the Alberg, Alberg Avenue repave. And at this point, it looks like we're going to repave from the Aliaska Day Lodge all the way almost to the hotel. We did a repave just three years ago on a section from the end of the guardrails to the hotel, so we'll be ending at that location. And so we'll be getting started with that after spring grading. We have a new roads contractor, went out to bid this last March. And the new contractors is Western Construction. They're very familiar with service areas and working with them, but this is their first time in Gerwood. So we're helping them onboard and get prepared. So the real first major action will be the spring grading. And then they won the contract for the repave too, so they'll be repaving out there on Alberg when we get that going. So, and just quickly with finances, we had a pretty busy winter, so our finances were up a bit compared to average years. But we just finished up with Coolico. The last maintenance bill there was for $89,000. But about $23,000 of that was the calcium that was bought for the spring. So we always buy it in April and the contractor purchases it. And so they left all the calcium here for Western to put to use. And so so far this year, we spent $270,000 of the 600 or $700,000 for the road maintenance contract out there. So for the most part, all budgets are right on cycle as they normally are for this time of year. And so all the information is there in the report. So let's see if anybody's got any questions. That's the report for, for the service area.
Any questions from anyone, supervisors or public? Okay, I see a question from Matt. Matt Martin, go ahead.
Oh yeah, sorry, I probably should have hit you up off the record on this, but I've heard a couple of people ask the same. So any, is it us or DOT that puts those candlesticks out as things melt out on the bike trails now that they're beautifully cleared and brushed off like they are?
Correct. Yeah, I talked to the DOT this morning, and they said they had a few more things to do, so I was going to put out those candlesticks tomorrow out there, and we'll also be putting the intersection candlesticks for the crosswalk. So we've just been holding and waiting for DOT to finish their sweeping. And then we'll get them out there and try to keep our visitors off our bike path.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kyle. Any other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions, so we'll move on to supervisor reports. Let's start with public safety, Jennifer.
Public safety, sorry, I had to grab my notes. The, I think the biggest thing that is coming down the pipes is the Whittier contract, the renewal for the Police Department with Whittier. And the committee is going to start reviewing options and discussing renewals or, or whatever else we're going to do with that. And then there was also discussion about events that are happening and not happening this summer, including Fiddlehead being cancelled, Run for Women still happening. But as an individual event, just the Mountain Run is happening on July 31st, and other things are pending. And I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I did not see Chief Ache. Do you have an update, any statistics or any update from him, Kyle?
I don't, you know, they've been onboarding a new officer, and, and so it sounds like that's been doing all pretty well. And they've been working with us on several things related to homeless camps and some abandoned vehicles and things along those lines. So, but nothing major updates.
Okay, I know one question that has, has come up a few times is the, the funding for the Crisis Intervention Team in Anchorage is coming through, I think, for the summer. Does that extend to Whittier? What's the situation here?
Yes, it's area-wide service, and he has been working directly, Chief Ache's been working directly with APD. And it sounds like now he's in discussions with AFD about how that works. I know the Assembly was making, was making funding to turn it in from 12 hours to a 24-hour service. And so they are working away on that. So I haven't heard anything lately, but I will follow up with him on it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything from, I don't know if we had any PSAC representatives in the, in the meeting, but if they are, they want to say something, just identify yourself. Otherwise, we will move on to Roads and Utilities, Amanda.
Thank you. Kyle said it so well. We went over for the last coolie, not over, but just like, it was a lot because of the calcium purchase. And yeah, looking forward to working with the new road construction folks.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on roads, utilities? Okay, let's move on to Parks and Recreation and Cemetery, Brianna.
Okay.
And you can move in, yeah, and you can move into Fire Department as well.
All right, sounds good. Everything is in these minute or in the packet for most of the updates, especially the Trails Committee meeting back on May 4th, seems like a while ago now. So I'll just say a few of those items. The Gerwood Trails Committee voted in favor of pursuing an easement for Stumpy's Winter Trail as their first easement project. And another larger item that happened that night was voting to write a letter of support for the Alaska Long Trail. Individuals are encouraged to write letters to the legislators you saw at the earlier part of the meeting. Lots of information can be found in that meeting packet for May 4th. And thank you to Michelle Samuelson and Brooks Chandler for their recent trail donations. The Gerwood Trails Master Plan meeting was on May 11th, so stay tuned for the next period for public comment, which is very key that people participate. And if you can participate, this is your community, and it's really important to be involved. Cemetery, no update there. And then the Fire Department meeting was on the same day. So I know that there was a meeting earlier today, so some of this may be corrected or out of date since Chief Weston is here. But the topic was first quarter budget revisions that were downgraded from 300,000 to 175,000, prorated to June 1st. And our two Assembly Meeting or Members and the whole Assembly with GBOs representatives and Chief Weston helped support, get us the missing 125,000 remaining. And they utilized the ARP, American Risky Plan, funds for this. Chief Weston also presented a minimal staffing chart from Chief Weston also presented a minimal staffing chart from June 1st through Labor Day to present earlier this afternoon, I believe. And she talked about increasing 2022's budget asks, so firefighter medicals meet NFPA requirements. Our department needs to conduct pre-hire medicals and currently does not meet the Alaska Presumptive Health Legislation. And as well as potential wage increase because the wages have not been increased in two decades. So I'll stop there because I think Chief Weston probably has a revision to those, unless there's any questions.
Whoops, hold on. There we go. Hello. Yeah, Brianna, that was awesome. So yeah, for us, we are at, we've had 175 runs so far. We had a busy day yesterday with the car fire, which you probably saw on the news. Because of the aluminum body, it completely melted very quickly away. That was quite interesting. In portage, we had, for April, our stats, we had at that point 157 route calls. We had one fire call. I don't have the specifics on that unfortunately. 21 EMS calls, one hazardous condition and three service calls. So a grand total of 26 calls for service in April. As Brianna mentioned, we are getting ready for a busy summer, both on the highway and in Gerwood. So we are working on staffing for summer to ensure that we have both fire coverage and EMS coverage in the valley. And so we're working on that. And that's been presented a number of times. Basically, that means that we'll have, we're working towards having six people available at any time in the valley to respond to fire and EMS. And that's sort of a minimum staffing standard. Along with that, that meets our NFPA requirements for 1720, which is the staffing standard for volunteer departments. And it also, you know, you need six people to do a cardiac code, so it falls nicely in there. We have a great bunch of firefighters working for us right now. They are very dedicated and just really enthusiastic about learning. We're really happy to be back all training together in the fire station versus small groups. And so we've been, we've had a number of people red carded this year that we hadn't had before, basically twice as many as we normally have. So we'll be able to, if we need to, rotate a brush truck, staffing through a brush truck. If there's a deployment opportunity for people to gain experience in the Kenai or Matsuburo for a short time period. So that's pretty good. And yeah, things are looking good. If you have, I would urge you to, just as we move into summer, make sure to check if it's a burning day and the burning regulations, which are online. Or you can call, so you can look at muni.org, is it a burn day? Or, and you can also call 267-5020 to check each day if it's a burn day or not. And it does change daily based on wind conditions and also fuel moisture content. We had a super successful first woodlot day yesterday, so thank you to Christina Dixon for staffing that. We were able to have the woodlot and then we're also collecting green browse for the Wildlife Conservation Center. And so we're really super happy about that partnership. And then there'll be a next one, the next one will be next month. Does anybody have any questions for me?
One quick question, Chief. You mentioned that some of your, some of your volunteers have been red-carded. For those of us who sort of follow soccer and rugby, that sounds like a bad thing. Do you want to share what that actually means?
Well, also being a British subject like Mike, yes, it doesn't mean what we think of a red card. A red card is, you're required to have a red card for woodland firefighting, otherwise you can't go to work. And so there's an arduous, medium and a light work capacity. So for people like myself who are maybe on the older scale and do firefighter management or team management of large fires, we don't have to have the arduous rating, which I did, but I don't.
I think we lost your audio, Chief. Are you back? Okay, it looks like, it looks like we lost Chief Weston. I'll move on to the next item and then if the chief comes back, she can, she can finish off. So land use should be pretty quick. We had a, are you, are you back now, Chief? I'm afraid I can't, we can't hear you. Okay, well, we'll just move on. So for land use, we had a very long meeting on last Monday. In fact, we, we hit just over four hours and had to drop several items, which we'll come back to next month. I think everything we covered just about is, is on the agenda tonight. Chapter 21, Title 21, Chapter 9, parking requirements is actually a parallel set of changes being proposed by the municipality. That doesn't preclude or change us going ahead with ours, but there is a possibility some aspects of them might get merged. We had a very interesting Housing Working Group discussion last week, which included some discussion around the Holden Hills RFP. And we'll be discussing that again at land use. And we have a discussion which we're going to bring up to land use and GBOS next month. Any questions on any of these supervisor reports from public or other supervisors? Okay, I'm not seeing anything, so I will move to public comment. Persons offering public comment, state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Brian Burnett, please go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Gerwood Board of Supervisors and my fellow Gerwood residents. Brian Burnett, speaking as Aliaska Ski Area General Manager. As many of you probably know, this next weekend is going to be our last weekend of operations at Aliaska, finishing our last weekend of, of May skiing. And to finish things up, on Sunday, May 23rd, we will be hosting a COVID vaccination clinic in the Day Lodge. You can go to the Aliaska Resort Day Lodge from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Sunday, the 23rd and receive any one of the three vaccines that are available for COVID-19. These, all of these vaccines are going to be administered by the State of Alaska. You, it's going to be operated as a, just a walk-in or one can go and register for a time slot. Go to myhealth.alaska.gov and you can sign up for a time slot. Otherwise, I believe that there's going to be enough flexibility there to just fit people in as they go. So come on up for, for your last day on the slopes and all three vaccines will be available. We will also make the Day Lodge available for follow-up for the three-week and far-week second shot delay. And then to sweeten the pot, anybody that shows up for a vaccine, I am going to give them a lift ticket to go ski for the day. So hopefully, we see a bunch of our Gerwood residents and anybody else that is eligible for a vaccine. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Does that include people who are already vaccinated or do you only get a lift ticket if you vaccinated there?
You're gonna have to roll your sleeve up, buddy.
I'll do it again. So this includes, this includes the Pfizer, so it's available to children from 12 upwards as well.
Exactly, exactly. So I think it's a great opportunity for our, for our community and looking forward to seeing, seeing the service that we can provide.
Great, thank you. Excellent idea. Brianna?
Thank you. Real quick, an announcement about the Gerwood Alaska Run for Women. We will have a virtual race in our town and the course will be set for June 12th through June 19th. So register through their main website and find the Gerwood team. It's through Four Valleys if you have any questions. So Four Valleys Facebook page is where you need to go if you'd like more information. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I'm not seeing any. So the next item, at least for the, the first part, the funding request, I am recused. So I will hand the chair over to Brianna and I will leave the meeting and rejoin when you've finished discussing that. I think Kyle will contact me when you're finished.
Okay.
Thank you. Over to you, Brianna.
See you soon. Okay, number 10 in old business is Gerwood Bear Aware requests with Elena Dupont presenting the Resolution of Support for Gerwood Bear Aware and the Municipality of Anchorage Code Enforcement Changes to Secure Trash Regulation Zone Ordinance Language Funding Request of $2,500 from the Public Safety Budget for Wind River Bear Institute in Summer 2021. Update on Interagency Grizzly Bear Committee, IGBC, Certification of Bear-Resistant Residential Bear Cans Available Through Alaska Waste. Elena, are you here? See you. Can't hear you.
Ah, yes, I was unmuted. I'm here, yes. And I provided a summary, a written summary. Did that come through in the packet of materials?
Wait, let's see. Margaret or Kyle, could you say what page that's on real quick?
It is not in the packet because it was received today, but there you go.
Thanks, Margaret. Yeah, I sent it late last night.
Okay, thanks, Margaret. Go ahead.
Great. Yeah, I just wrote this up just so you had something in front of you to kind of cover our funding requests and also to kind of provide some information about our hopes and goals for having Wind River Bear Institute back this summer. I think everybody knows that Wind River was here last summer working with us on a contract for two weeks. And last summer, they came pretty much in a reactive, responsive role. We were having a pretty intense bear conflict summer. And you know, we kind of got to the point in discussions with Fish and Game and amongst ourselves that we were feeling, and also with the community really, that we were feeling kind of as though we'd used up all of our tools in our limited toolbox. And so we reached out to Wind River because they have a unique tool that, that nobody else really has, which is using the Carillion Bear Dogs. And you know, beyond that, they, you know, Niels is also adept at making presentations and working with community members and really kind of serving as a voice that non-lethal tools do exist. And so we were really pleased with his time here. You know, he was able to work with some specific candidate bears. And he was also to, able to reach out to a lot of the community. You know, he interacted with a lot of community members while he was here, both while he was on patrol and also during presentations that he made. And you know, I feel, I feel like it was really effective, not only at, you know, working with the bears, but really it kind of ratcheting down that feeling of, I guess, apathy and feeling of helplessness that I think the community was getting to with, with the level of conflict that we were experiencing. So we were really pleased with Niels and we got some feedback from the community that it might be advantageous to have him back. And in talking with Fish and Game, it was just, you know, it was brought up that to build off of the work that he was able to accomplish last year, that it would be beneficial to have him come early in the season. So in a proactive role rather than a responsive role. And so our goal is to have him here actually in the next few weeks. Originally, he was planning to be here for the weekend of Memorial Day, but his schedule shifted and he'll be here ideally for basically the middle of June for 10 days. And so yeah, basically the point is to build off of the work that he started last year. We do still have some candidate bears that are engaging in conflict behavior and we have received reports of them back again this year already. And so the goal would be to have Niels here to really try to work with bears and teach them, you know, the right behavior early in the season before they really entrench those habits. And the other benefit of having Niels here for us at Gerwood Bear Aware is we have again opted not to host a public event similar to the one that we hosted in 2019. And so having Niels come is an opportunity for us to really engage the community and spread education in the absence of having that public event. So Niels would be planning on making some public presentations and we're working on collaborating with Fish and Game on combining one of his presentations with bear spray training because that is something that there seems to be a lot of demand for as well. So that's kind of the overview of why he would be back. In 2020, we did ask for public safety funds because of the nexus of, you know, human bear conflict and public safety. And so that's why we're here requesting funds again this year. We have $3,000 secured and we did have a grant application in to the Kenai Mountain Turnigan Arm Heritage Foundation. And we were unsuccessful actually with that. And so we talked with Niels and he's still willing to come and his, he has agreed to donate that portion of the funds as in-kind. So we're pretty excited that he was still willing to work with us with our more limited budget. And so as you can see, if you scroll down on the document, what we have is $3,000 in hand and we're asking for an additional $2,500 from the Public Safety Committee or Fund, I'm sorry, to contribute. Yeah, budget, Public Safety Budget, yeah, to contribute to this project. And the other thing that I wrote that's further up and I mentioned last month is that, you know, I told Niels he has a sort of unfortunate business model, whereas if he's successful, he's essentially working himself out of a job. And our goal is not to continue to have him come every single year. You know, we don't want to be here asking for funds every single year for, for Wind River Bear Institute. You know, hopefully, his time is, is spent and, and it's an investment kind of building infrastructure that then Gerwood Bear Aware can continue. But another goal of ours is to eventually have a larger Human Bear Conflict Management Plan for Gerwood that would cover really what is our vision for human bear coexistence and what that would look like and, and you know, what are our barriers to that right now and what are some of the goals and tools to accomplishing that? And so that type of management planning is something that Wind River Bear Institute does offer also as a contracted service. And our hope is that, you know, this time that Niels has spent here in Gerwood is, you know, could go towards his work on a larger management plan in the future as well. It has felt like a really functional partnership. You know, there aren't a lot of people in the country, let alone Alaska, who are working on this kind of a thing. And so we're fortunate to have Niels just, you know, five hours away. So yeah, that's the overview of the funding request. And I guess I can take questions on that and then we can invite Mike back in to the conversation.
Thank you, Elena. And that timing is really critical because we're four weeks away from mid-June. And meanwhile, we all need to make sure our neighbors and each other are keeping our trash secured. And I have a question from Chief Weston, but before that too, is there any comments from the board? Okay, Chief Weston, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that we very much enjoyed Wind River's presentation to the CERT group last year. And then as a dog handler, I appreciated the opportunity to walk with him late at night with the dogs and see the dogs working. The dogs are also, so not only was able to see the dogs working and, and help be a handler with them, that was very cool. But we also used the same bears and him on wildfires when we have large wildfires in Alaska. Those bears are deployed also to keep bears out of fire camps. So yeah, I just wanted to.
Those dogs are deployed, right, Michelle?
I'm sorry, not the bears. It's been a very long day. The dog, yeah, super cool, right? So just wanted to give a shout out of support for him.
Great, thank you. And also the public education is really important. So it's unfortunate that some of those cannot be carried out, but I think what you have in place of that so far, Elena, is, is wonderful. Any other comments from community members? And then we could move to entertain a motion of support for $2,500 from the Public Safety Funds for Wind River Bear Institute. Any board member like to make a motion?
I'll move to support the Wind River Bear Institute $2,500 funding request.
Great. Thank you, Amanda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, Kyle, we could do a roll call?
Just ask if there's any more discussion before we do.
Right. Okay, thanks, Kyle. Any further discussion? Okay.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. And I'll let Mike know, he's coming back.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Elena, for staying on.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate the support. So I'm very appreciative. Thank you. Is Mike back?
Two windows. I can start number 11, but we'll see.
Well, I think Mike wanted me to cover the IGBC updates, which are, there are none yet for the garbage can situation. And maybe Mike has something that I don't have from John Weddleton, but the last that I heard that that update for the trash handling ordinance was in the municipals, you know, in their hands. It looks like maybe this is, I don't know, are these comments that we received back from the MOA now that are on the screen?
No, these are what currently is, I think, with the MOA. We're just showing reference.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, so these are, yeah, in their hands. And hopefully, they're making those edits and we'll see them soon.
Yeah, I think Jack Frost was gonna, was supposed to be following up with this as well. So I will follow up with him and find out where things are. Or perhaps I'll ask Kyle to do that for us, if that's okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Elena. And Mike, she just asked if you had an update for IGBC, I think, for the trash?
No, I was hoping Elena did, actually.
Okay, no update.
Yeah, I keep asking and they still are putting it off. So we'll, I'll, I'll share as soon as I hear.
Yeah, I think the last I heard was they were going to test in April. And obviously, it's now May.
Yeah, well, we did, we heard that they did actually, they completed the testing. And so we did hear that the company that produces this latch is Rare Pacific. And they actually submitted multiple new latches for testing. I'm not sure how many, but the implication was a good amount. And that they were all tested in April and that the IGBC needed to complete reporting on that and then also communication with Rare Pacific before they could make that information public. So we have not heard yet if they've apparently not completed those steps because we haven't heard and they have not yet updated their website. So that's all we know.
Okay, Mike, would you like to chair back for number 11?
Okay, thank you very much, Brianna. So we're now on item 11, Girdwood Forest Fair 2021 Update by Karen Zakaro.
I don't believe Karen is here, but-
Is anyone else here from?
Go ahead, yeah.
Is anyone else here from Forest Fair? Sorry, Kyle, do you have an update?
Well, the announcement from Forest Fair was that they will not be hosting a live fair this year, as traditionally done. They are looking at more of a virtual fair, but look to return in 2022.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't see anything more on that item. So we will move on to item number 12, which is Girdwood Fire Rescue Updates and Requests. An update on Engine 41 and the contract between the Girdwood Volunteer Fire Rescue and the MOA. Chief Weston, are you back?
Hello again. So, yeah, we are working on specifications for Engine 41 and also for Rescue 41. So we're working on those. So that's the update on that. And then for the contract, I think we might have covered part of it already. We received $175,000 prorated for this EMS year in addition, and then a promise of possibly an additional $125,000. The Fire Board met today with Board Supervisors, and they met after the meeting. And we're having another meeting tomorrow at 6 o'clock to add some language into the contract. And then also look at the minimum staffing costs that are required by the contract.
Okay, thank you. So do you have a timescale for that?
Our goal is to get the contract back to the, back to the municipality so it can go to legal and get to the assembly and approved before the administration change.
Okay, thank you. Amanda?
Yes, thank you. Is the meeting tomorrow open to the public?
Yes, I don't see why it couldn't, could not be. It's, we sent out a Teams meeting, I think the board person, the board secretary did. I can forward that. And I can also publish that on our Facebook page. I'll get the board to do it. It's really a board responsibility versus me. I work for the board. So I'll get the board to publish that.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. And I think you, did you mention for Engine 41? So were we expecting to discuss that funding purposes next month or in July?
I think it'll probably be July. We're still working through the process.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions on these items from supervisors or the public? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. So we'll move on to item number 13, Agenda Item LUC 1912-05, Land Use Committee Recommend Dayton for GBOS Letter of Objection to 1011 Aliaska Highway Turtle Hills Long Platte with Four Variances. The public hearing is scheduled for the Plating Board on June the 2nd at 6:30. Christina Hendrickson is going to present to this.
Good evening. My name is Christina Hendrickson. I live at 150 Hightower Road. And I am presenting the same presentation that I gave at the Land Use Committee last week, waiting for it to come up on screen.
Sorry, let me get to it real quick. I'm sorry.
You bet. Thank you. In the meantime, while that's coming up, for those that don't know me, I have been in Girdwood since 2012. I bought a condo here within the Ski View Building and have lived here for nine years. And I'm really appreciative of everything that Girdwood has provided me as a home. Prior to that, I moved 19 times in 32 years on this earth. So to find my forever home in the Girdwood Valley has been a blessing. Thank you, Kyle. You'll go on to the next slide. So as a piece of education for everybody, we heard earlier tonight that Tim Cabana has a short plat. I have a long plat. And the long plat is because of the variances that I'm asking for, as well as the request to build a street on a public use easement that is designated as a street. But I'll go into those details here shortly. So our packet is also included in this presentation. It is what triggered last month's presentation, or excuse me, this month's presentation to Land Use and to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. It includes all the particulars that you see on the left-hand side. But in addition to it, we put in some supporting documentation that kind of walk you through our 10% design. It shows you the correspondence that we've had, since this has been in place since fall of 2019. And then because of the use of the public use easement, we made sure to put in the governance thereof and also the governance that we propose for our subdivision. Going on to the next slide, Kyle. So our timeline has been as follows. We own the, what was the Little Red Cabin, that is now the Little Blue Cabin with the yellow door on Aliaska Highway. We acquired it in fall of 2019. And within two weeks of closing, we went ahead and started meeting with the agencies to see about a subdivision. My path to single homeownership in Girdwood differs from others. I, we wanted, we knew that we needed to subdivide the plat in order to sell part of it, in order to build our home. But then also, we wanted to contribute to the housing scarcity here in Girdwood. So we wanted to make sure that our plat had what it needed to maximize that potential. In the winter of 2020, we had our Land Use Committee meeting in that January. And as a result thereof, I had a community member contact of both our administration and our representatives stating that I had a perceived conflict of interest because at that time, I sat at the dais of Girdwood Board of Supervisors as the Park and Recreation Chair. So I opted not to run for my seat. I had filled the seat vacated by Sam Daniel, and he had only two years left in his term. So in April of 2020, I rotated off of GBOS, similar to what you just heard with Jerry and Aaron at the beginning of tonight's meeting, and wanted to pick up the application at the time. But unfortunately, there was a pandemic. So in addition to that overcast in the summer of 2020, my husband also befilled a medical emergency in the fall of 2020. So we were unable to move on things just because time didn't allow. So in the winter, we re-met with the agencies. We confirmed that the way ahead for our plat and our variances was similar to that of what we presented in the Land Use Committee meeting in January of 2020. So now in the spring, we're meeting with you guys. And then again, as Mike said, we do have a Plating Commission meeting on the 2nd of June. And then we intend in 2021 to design permit and build our subdivision. So what does our subdivision look like? Let's go into some of the details in the next slide. Thank you. So this gives you a general overview in land use. We have above us, number one is a combined parcel that is a single-family home as well as a greenhouse in a combined parcel. And then number two, you see our parcel, Little Red Cabin at the bottom corner. And then number three is a public use easement. Number four is a single-family home. And the source of this content is from Anchorage Live. And why they have it as Doreen Lane as opposed to Duran, I do not know. But so you'll see the different parcels that are platted off of Duran. So that kind of gives you a context in the character of the neighborhood in which we bought in 2018. So moving on to the next slide, I'm going to explain public use easements. So there are three public use easements in Girdwood, the one that we bought next to, number three, as well as Juniper. Juniper is a land use easement specifically for a proposed road extension. And so as you cross Aliaska Highway, you see that there is a treeed parcel, and then there's like a little swoop. And that actually connects to a road that is currently platted off of Carrioles. So that is a public use easement that has homes that have Juniper addresses as opposed to Aliaska Highway addresses. Onto the next public use easement on the next slide is Glacier Creek Avenue. So Glacier Creek Avenue also, as you cross Aliaska Highway and you see the semi-treeted spot, it goes before Joe and Melissa Bell's house and then connects over. That too is a platted relief valve for an expansion onto Carrioles from the South Town Site. All of that is covered in the South Town Site Plan. And that is available for you guys to review on the municipality's website. So Glacier Creek has addresses on it, but there's also Glacier Creek access for Aliaska Highway residents as well. So moving right along, how did these easements get installed? So in 1982, the Department of Public Works were bestowed these three that you see over on the left-hand side, 48, 49, and 50. That is, I believe, Glacier Creek, and then Juniper, and then 14A is the public use easement next adjacent to our property. Public Works was instilled with these public use easements specifically for utility lanes or lines, streets, trails, and committing those portions to those assigned, to those assigned parcels, as you see in the narrative below. Okay, so fast forward a couple decades, we'll move on to the next slide. That public use easement changed a little bit in that it became a part of a newly named, so Public Works expanded. And they became the Department of Projects Management and Engineering Division as well. So an intergovernmental permit was placed on these public use easements for this division, project management and engineering. You often heard to it referred to as PMNE in some of our GBOS meetings, to take authorization for these parcels. And they were authorized to make decisions based on for public streets, specifically to assign permits and to make either drainage or transit or anything that you see there. They are designated by PMNE, but they are currently managed by the Real Estate Department of the Municipality of Anchorage. So again, Glacier Street, Glacier Creek Drive is a public use easement and a street. Juniper Drive is a public use easement and a street. And the parcel next to us, Lot 14A, is a public use easement intended for a street. So moving on to the next slide. So our plat wanted to divide into two parcels. So with this, what we wanted to do is to ensure that Lot 1 could be developed to the fullest extent projectable so that we could make it a duplex so that not just a single-family home could go in here, that a duplex could go in here. To give you a lay of the land, the little cabin that we've renovated is a mere 13 feet from the property line. It was set there by the original owner from whom we bought the land. And it's still in really great shape. So next to us on the other side, you'll see the public use easement. Within this public use easement, there are some GPS encroachments. You do see gardens and garden beds and an overhang of a shed belonging to the adjacent neighbors on the south side. So with that, this is our plat. But let me tell you more about the variances because that gets a little bit more complicated. So moving on to the next slide, you'll see that we have the desire for access involved in our variances. So in reading through the packet tonight, and I know 75 pages worth of a plat application in there, it's a lot, so I'll just boil it down. We evaluated option one, and it wasn't an option for us for a variety of reasons. So we went to option two to look at potentially coming up the south side. In order to do that, of course, you need an abrin. So we went to the Department of Transportation, at which time we learned that they would not approve our potential driveway to Lot 2 through Lot 1 via an access onto Aliaska Highway because we're next to an easement that's meant to be a road. So that, option three, is what we continue to evaluate. So option three tonight, we'll, I'll show you how our variances intend to build a street on the public use easement and to take our driveways for Lot 1 and for Lot 2 from that public use easement. So no different than going down Glacier Creek, no different than going down Juniper. Those are roads. They are named. They are addressed. And then our driveways would come onto Lot 1 and Lot 2 from those. So with that in mind, we will go to the next one. And I'll go through our four variant. Oh, I'll start with the road design and then I'll go through our variances. So the standard design for a road within the Girdwood Valley Service area, courtesy of Title 21, is a 20-foot paved road. It has two-foot shoulders on either side with an additional two feet of snow storage, making it anywhere between a 24- to 25-foot paved road going up that public use easement. Noting that our desire for a more treeed landscape in the area until it's fully developed, and a variety of other safety considerations, having listened at Girdwood Board of Supervisors to the other problems on Echo Ridge, the problems at the end of Timberline, and a variety of other places along our neighborhoods in Girdwood Valley, we're opting to propose the following. Moving on to the next one. So it's a very rudimentary, off-scale design. Kyle, next slide. There. Next slide down to-
This one.
The applicant. There you go. Thank you so much for that. So this is, rather than the 20-foot road, we'd like to put in a 16-foot gravel road. In order to minimize the footprint, what we're proposing is to put a part of the two-foot shoulder that would be for snow storage and others on our property so that Lot 1 and Lot 2 engulf these extra spaces. on our property so that Lot One and Lot Two engulf these extra spaces. So that only on the Lot fourteen A, that public use easement, there's a two-foot shoulder for the o- opposite side of that sixteen-foot wide um road. So in lieu of a twenty-five-foot paved dra- uh road going up Lot fourteen A to access the driveways, we're looking at doing um a eighteen-foot footprint on that public use easement and accompanying the two-foot and otherwise snow storage on ours. Okay, now moving on to the next slide. How does this look? So this is a two percent, a ten percent design. Um and I went ahead and I put on the the following na- names so that it could be very clear to everybody because there's so much going on in this and all those little arrows get lost when you're trying to like squint at a screen in a public meeting. So uh the road would be named, and I'll go into the naming procedure later in the presentation. Uh but ultimately, the dry, the existing um access to the cabin uh would remain. And a good portion of that is because, again, our neighbors to the north have a a second lot within their um home site. And so they still need legal access to that one. And as you see, we don't actually share very much of it, um based on the actual verified survey markers uh that we were able to do with our survey. So you come down uh and uh this way we would access the to-be-named street. And that way, the co- the traffic for Lot One and Lot Two are concentrated at one apron. So the driveway that would go to the sixteen thousand square foot front parcel that could hopefully ho- house a duplex in the future would have a driveway that pulls on to this to-be-named road, just like our planned single-family home on Lot Two would have the driveway, which you see up there. Both of these follow the contours of the land um and have been meticulously laid out so as to uh have optimal drainage and in great line of sight um accessing the to-be-named street for um for egress onto Aliaska Highway. Um at this time, Lot One, when developed, well, the cabin will no longer exist and therefore no other access from that current apron will be permitted onto Lot One of this planned subdivision. Only access to this planned subdivision would come from the driveways being accessed from that to-be-named street. Okay, so how do we get there? Going on to the next slide. Thanks, Kyle. Number one, we want to shrink that footprint from twenty feet to sixteen feet. What this does is it maintains the vegetative buffers between us and our neighbors to the south. Um what we did was we made sure to put the planned uh street abutting to our boundary, again minimizing it and taking those two feet of snow storage and everything onto our property and our parcels. What we here did about this one is the, if you have a paved street, um a lot of people start going up it. And we heard this both uh at a couple of other meetings, and it made sense to us to uh because there is Strava data that is published, courtesy of the Gerwood Trails Plan, that shows some of the primitive trails that are behind our property on a big parcel called Lot Four, Lot Eighteen A that uh butts to and provides access to the Beaver Pond Trail. And so what we didn't want was to create a paved parking spot for people to offload dogs and bikes and skis and stuff like that and start using that as a recreational access. Um so uh what we also want to to do was show that the sixteen-foot here also still accommodates the required turnaround that we need for emergency access. We worked with the fire marshals specifically to see what type of design could be uh applied here to ensure that uh trucks' engines could come up and service our home, which would be over a hundred feet from the right-of-way. Um I'm getting kind of code technical here, but bottom line, fire marshal said, hey, we have a truck that goes up, turns into your driveway, and then it would back out and it would back into this hammerhead design that you see there, and then have a safe egress out so that uh when crossing to the Seward Highway, you have a a good line of sight moving forward. Okay, next one, next variance. And the next slide, when you're ready, is the desire to remove the uh pedestrian bike pathway requirement. So for that twenty-five-foot road, there's also the requirement to put a sidewalk and a bike path on it. Uh we feel like that's a little overdesigned. Uh most of everybody just on Juniper, Glacier Creek already rides their bicycle to get down onto Arker DeBurg Bike Path. And since we're adjacent to it, we figured it would uh be easy to eliminate. It complements the estimated uh level of traffic. Uh we will have a single-family home on Lot Two and up to a duplex on Lot One, so it's not like we're gonna need a designated uh bike path. Again, it also helps maintain that vegetative buffer uh between us and the property to the south. Moving on to variance number three on the next slide. This one is the pavement one. So again, looking to not have to put a paved road. Uh we want to make sure that we stay in character with the neighborhood. It complements estimated traffic, it reduces nuisance traffic. Again, single-family home on the back end and a uh up to a duplex on the lot, front lot. I think that there won't be a need to have any paved uh access there, and it still helps with uh potential maintenance. Uh on that note, with regard to maintenance, I do want to state that in having a single-family home on Lot Two and up to a duplex on Lot One, that's a significant contributor to property taxes, which would help maintain the infrastructure that we are investing in developing this project moving forward. Okay, next slide. This is our last variance, and it's to um waive the requirement for having a dedicated, uh the the frontage on a dedicated right-of-way. At this time, this public use easement isn't a dedicated right-of-way and probably won't be until potential Lot fourteen A behind us would be developed, and then this would be moving into a full street design to accommodate the, that appropriate access. So it, in having our street in front of us and having our addressing in front of us, it's still not on a dedicated right-of-way, even though it's a named street. So we needed to have uh this requirement in there so that we could uh offset um any uh needs there. Again, that was just one of those little code requirements that I was like, really? Okay, sure, fine. Needs to be a variance. Um regarding the street naming, that is a a different process. Uh what it has is it's within code. If you'd like to look it up, there's a citation right there. Um and we plan to follow that with our our neighbors uh if and when approved. Okay, moving on to the next slide. All right, so having listened to Echo Ridge, having listened to Powder Run, having listened to Virgin Creek Falls and a variety, and housing working groups on land use, again, I've been really involved in the community. So I I pulled together a set of uh draft covenants that would uh provide uh a lot of standing for how we plan to move forward with this development. We're not allowing nightly or short-term rentals, neither on Lot One nor especially not on Lot Two. Um Lot One, again, should somebody build a duplex there, we're going to ask for at least one of the units to be owner-occupied. And should they have a a desire to potentially rent, that they have a long-term rental agreement with the other unit, or they're welcome to to negotiate that. Um the vegetation, again, we want to make sure to keep the the tree buffer, the noise from Aliaska Highway, as many of you who are on that know what that noise uh can be, especially during the summer when you have a lot of buses and trucks going along. Uh we wanted to make sure that uh there was a consideration for the uh natural aesthetic of the area and that any landscape portion be maintained on a regular basis. Um so what this does is it provides us with uh an opportunity to maintain the character of the neighborhood. Again, it ensures a safe egress because we're not having nightly rentals and a lot of cars turning over. But also, it encourages housing solutions. So we plan on keeping the condo that we live in at one five zero High Tower Road and placing it on the long-term market. So with this project moving forward, with us um being able to move into a dual uh into a single-family home, uh we per- we will provide housing opportunities for long-term Gerwood residents in this space and then providing two additionals. So we have a ability to do four homes with this project. Moving forward to the next slide, please. So not noting that many of you probably haven't been able to read all seventy-five pages of our plat application. Um I did want to put this specific extraction from our project description uh in full view. Wanted you to recognize that over the year and a half that I have heard from community members, I've heard about other projects, we've incorporated those lessons learned. Our ten percent design truly does show how many times we've uh worked with the municipal staff to ensure that we met the traffic needs, uh that we took into consideration of other projects in in the area. And that moreover, that we had a lot of environmental and safety considerations with our our proposed design. Uh we feel that our project is thoughtfully laid out and that we have taken into consideration safety, environment, and community um with what we plan to do. Uh our proposal to build a street on a public use easement that's specifically designated for a street will be our responsibility and will be uh permitted and built to um the standard that the municipality approves with our final permit and with our variances. Um and then the maintenance for that streak, street uh as documented in the land use committee on Monday would be through the Gerwood Valley Service Area. There's a specific process that Kyle uh provided a great example of for the Alberg Extension, and then that was a um private development of street, uh but then the municipality paves for uh its like snow, snow clearance and stuff like that, would be the very same thing here. Again, both property taxes from Lot One and Lot Two uh would be contributing to the Gerwood Valley Service Area um and would increase uh the property tax pool from which to uh have for that kind of maintenance. Moving on to the next slide. So one of the things that I wanted to limit in the land use committee meeting uh were extraneous questions. There were a lot of public forums that I participated in that I saw a significant amount of overreach uh with public questions that I thought were not um suitable for any applicant or project review. Um ultimately, our project will be to code, with the exception of the four variances uh that are decided upon by the Plating Commission on the second of June. So I will happily a- answer questions of the board and of the public this evening as it pertains specifically to our subdivision of two plots and our four variances that we have up. Anything else is a different process, is governed by a different agency, and is not up for a public debate at this point because the decision-makers are not at the public level. They're at the municipal level. Our taxpayers, our tax dollars pay for subject matter expertise within these departments to make these types of decisions based on tariffs, based on code, and a variety of other factors. So with that, my final slide is uh just kind of a picture. Many people uh knew me as a Gerwood Board of Supervisor, Kyle, next slide, uh as a Kyle Board of Supervisor for the past couple of years, but I kind of want to give you a kind of a behind-the-scenes of how much since two thousand and twelve, uh I have contributed to the community. Um since going through this process, I'm no longer on the Gerwood Board of Supervisors. Since going through this process, I am no longer on a Rotarian. Um but I still am interested in serving our community, and I wanted to showcase how we've been age discriminators at Forest Fair. Uh my husband teaches at the Mountain Learning Center, teaches young students how to ski and how to bomb down the mountain. Um you know, you've successfully arrived in a community when you win the beer stein holding contest and you make one of the characters on the beer label of the flagship beer of your local brewery, which is a half mile from the house and very easy to get to on a regular basis. But we enjoy wildlife, we enjoy recreating in the valley, we set our vows on Glacier Creek right behind us. Uh as I speak to you guys this evening, I'm looking out over the green space and the vegetative buffer, my parian area that I have between us and Glacier Creek, and I can see the sun shining on Max and Aliaska. I love it here, and I'm really excited to put together a project that was thoughtfully laid out and in accordance with the intended use of those parcels, and I stand by ready for questions from the board. I give it to you, Mike.
Thank you, Christina. So um I just wanted to say a little bit about context. So at Land Use Committee, there was a motion uh which uh passed the vote to write a letter of objection uh to these, to the long plat application, the four variances rather. Um so that's kind of what's in front of us now, unless you have any other requests, Christina. Um so we're basically looking at the letter of objection and a decision on what to do with that. Um and the other thing I'd like to say is, um obviously, you're you're welcome to answer or not answer questions, but I think any, any questions which pertain to the the general application are welcome here. I just make that clear to the public and to other supervisors. Um so I've got a couple of questions. I have a couple of quick questions, then I'll hand it over to other supervisors. So the letter of objection specifically is um asking, uh is pointing out that there is legal access to uh Lot Fifteen. I'm just interested in your response. So you already have a lot, uh I think we we established there is, there is probably lot, uh legal access to Lot Fifteen um from the north side. So what's the situation there?
Yeah, so as we looked at that uh back in two thousand and nineteen, um the, in order, you'll stay on that slide, please. Go back, Kyle. Thank you. So as you see with this one, you can see that we uh had the official survey done. And so in order to actually get access to Lot Two, um we would have to move the um the structure. And whereas there were uh subject matter experts about moving structures on the phone that said that that would be easy, that's actually not easy when it comes to financial services. So uh the bank doesn't look cut too kindly on uh moving the structure. Moreover, the uh the need to move the structure and putting in uh the additional um uh infrastructure needed to support it, uh based on the fact that it's got copper piping and a variety of other things, uh would have been a little bit too much. Uh in addition to that, we would have had to use a variety of different easements um and enter in legal agreements that we were not interested in uh pursuing um in order to maintain that. Further, after due consideration, we saw that we, there still wasn't a way that we could maximize the potential lot usage to give us a duplex and maintain that sixteen thousand square feet. Uh so we opted to uh look at the south boundary, and that's what led us to the conversation with DOT and led us to the conversation uh about the variances that are before us today. Those are some of the variables, but not the complete story. I don't feel the need to give you all the details about my fiduciary concerns uh regarding how I put together my options.
Thank you. We might go into that further. The um uh the second, second point, the um objection is about um uh the having an additional crossing of the bike path and additional access to Aliaska Highway. Obviously, that's a new construction. Um and presumably, if there was a um full-service road put in there, it would be, need to be changed again. So again, your comments on having an additional um crossing of Aliaska Highway, or sorry, additional crossing of the bike path there.
So at this time, there's no legal access to that parcel. Um so it would behoove the landowner to go ahead and access it anyways uh by putting in an apron. And so uh I am doing that uh with the landowner's uh support um with a different action with the Department of Transportation. As far as the safety parameters, uh the whole point of having uh rather than a a of having, making sure that we have both of the lots accessing one driveway, um and ensuring that they have a cleaner line of sight. Uh that was important in our conversations with the municipality, um with traffic, with right-of-way, and a variety of of others. I will also point out that within the, this corridor uh from us down to the Forest Service, there are three properties on Aliaska Highway whose addresses are different. They're either on Monarch Mine or Sprout that have primary access on those uh addressed lanes, but then still also have an apron that they use as a primary driveway and access to their property. The Department of Transportation, when they replaced this uh section of the highway and the bike path and installed those swoops uh five years ago, did not complete a thorough analysis of where those swoops should be. And so there's like random ones along the property, uh along Aliaska Highway, even in front of Brenner Circle, in front of the glass house. There's one just sitting there. There's nothing platted there except uh everybody else in Brenner Circle takes it from Brenner's Brenner Circle. But there's just one random one there. So there's a lot to be said about uh the aprons and the access and the bike path along the Aliaska Highway. And as far as I'm concerned, this one's a legal access to uh this parcel. Um that was, and the municipality was not consulted during the DOT's revision to this uh highway in two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, um and the third concern uh was about the, about constructing something which is uh less than, you know, narrower than um recommended for the purposes of um the mute, the the service area having to do maintenance. I heard you say something in your presentation about um this would be maintained by the service area. I'm not actually sure that's true. Um we checked with uh planning um what the arrangements would be, and it seems to be something which is uh the service area can choose to. We checked with planning what the arrangements would be and it seems to be something which is the service area can choose to provide maintenance, but does not have to because it's not a dedicated right of way. So I just wondered if your, your understanding was the same.
My understanding was based on the example that Kyle gave on Monday evening in Margaret's notes. Any other further conversations with the authorities such as the Planning Department that would dictate what the maintenance should be on that? Of my pay grade. That's why I pay property taxes to those subject matter experts to make those decisions and I'd be happy to follow them through the letter. Thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring out those specific issues that are currently in our draft letter objection. I'd like to hand it over to any questions from other supervisors. I saw a hand very briefly appear and disappear before I caught it. Jennifer, I think you've gotten there first.
Yeah, so Christina, I can't remember if I imagined this or did I hear in your previous presentation or in the discussions around it, land use, excuse me, that there were also, there were actually other possibilities, whether or not other possibilities around sharing neighbors' driveways, et cetera. Like my understanding is that the neighborhood was trying to come up with other options to this, but is that wrong?
To date, since my land use committee presentation in January of 2020, I've had one phone call with one neighbor that has not resulted in any of their alternatives that could be put forth as feasible. Other presentations to the land use committee and to the Gerwood Board of Supervisors, I have offered my cell phone number and also my email has been available on all of my presentation materials and for a while, but when I was on GBUS, available there. I have not heard nor seen any formal or informal alternatives to consider with my neighbors at this time. Thank you.
Okay, I see Amanda's hand up as well. Amanda, go ahead.
Thanks. I, I wasn't sure, would you guys be building this road or is this something DOT is building?
We would build the duration. We would build the apron and we would build the road to specifications.
When you say specifications, you mean the specifications under the variance if it's granted?
Under the permits, under the permits provided under, after construction evaluation, yes.
Right. So that'd be under the, under the variances. Okay. Any other questions from supervisors? If not, I will open it to the public. I'm not seeing any hands up. If you have, Linay.
Hi there. Thank you. I'm Linay. I live on Doran Lane and a business owner, resident in Gerwood since 1999. Served on the Four Valleys Board, worked for Gerwood 2020, volunteered for that organization, currently serve on the Gerwood Inc. Board, have volunteered at the Forest Fair, volunteered at the school and also spearheaded the Alieska Snow Classic. So I've been a participant and volunteer in our community for many, many years of my life. I guess I just have a few comments from some notes I took at this most recent presentation of Christina's. One of the first things is that one of the problems I have with the proposed private driveway is that the problem of subdivision and needing to build the home in the back of the lot is a self-created problem, that there is access to the property of which the neighbors around have reached out and offered alternatives as well as the community with the flagpole. And when discussing about this, Christina's not been interested in that option. She wants to go with the road and keep her property intact. She answered herself when talked about moving the cabin at the land use meeting that she was not interested in that option. So again, she's creating a situation where she would prefer a road versus to do the flagpole to access the back lot. Talking about helping to solve the housing problem in Gerwood by this duplex, clearly the little home would be moved to build the duplex, therefore the problem of the little blue house being in the way of building a flag pole lot is, would be a problem that would no longer exist because the little house would be going away to build a duplex. At which point she says that the duplex would not be used for certain things such as nightly rentals. Only unless she owned it and she didn't want to operate a nightly rental for a period of time, would that be in standing. There's no law to enforce her to have it not be a nightly rental. And if she sold it off, that also would not be in place to maintain that it would not be a nightly rental. There's no power to control what would happen with that piece of property. The most recent comment she just gave about keeping vegetation in place, personally I found interesting because she got the permit to cut down trees on the public use easement that was in effect until December 31st of this year, which would affect bird migratory issues. And the planning board hasn't even approved the building of this road and for some reason vegetation was cut for no reason at all, not even to harvest or use the trees, which would be, as Christina stated at the land use meeting, removed. So I guess another one is the naming of the streets, since the road wouldn't be used for public access and would not be encouraged for people to park on so they could access the land out back. It's really not a street, it's a private road. At that time, those are all my comments and I thank the board for allowing me to make them.
Mike, I have responses.
Okay, Christina.
Thank you. So the to be named street is not a driveway, it's a street. And per the code citation that I provided in my presentation, there is a specific way to designate that the, the, the street is not private in that it is named because the land is disturbed. And so when you read through the code, the code has it so that when a pathway and/or the land is used it as intended, which is for a street, it does provide for a specific naming for it. So it's not a private drive, it's not a driveway. It's an actual street that will have a name to it from which both will have an address. Moreover, in placing a flagpole lot eliminates the opportunity for Lot One to be the required acreage for a duplex. Required acreage for a duplex, per the municipality's code, is 6,801 square feet or 6,800. And this one exceeds it just by a little bit for some additional buffers. By putting in a flagpole lot, we don't have that opportunity to provide a duplex. Furthermore, because it is a subdivision, I am able to sell the property with CCRs that are enforceable that could allow for a person to build a single family home without short-term rentals and/or up to a duplex should they choose with no short-term rentals. Thank you.
Okay, any other? Doug, please go ahead. I think you're still on mute, Doug. Are you?
Yeah, thank you, Mike. I think there's still a bit of an echo, is it? Okay. So thank you and thank, thanks to the board supervisors for hearing my comments. I, I would really like to emphasize that the Hendricksons have options that they just shared to subdivide and provide access to their proposed, their proposed back lot. And they can do this from their current access, which is an access, a legal access that they have complete use of regardless of where the, their lot line is. These options that they have available would not need to use the PUE in question. The reason they provided to the land use for not utilizing these options is the expense of moving the cabin. However, the option of building a road is, is even more expensive. So that really doesn't pencil. Also, both HLB Real Estate Department and the Hendricksons have also stated that the intended use of Lot 14A, this PUE to access those back 40 acres of HLB property, Lot 18A, is not even in the plan to be developed for the next five to 10 years at least. So this makes the proposal of using the PUE as road access to the Hendrickson's personal subdivision entirely unnecessary. And more than that creates a safety hazard with an unneeded crossing of the bike path and a maintenance liability for the community. The, the, a large number of folks have spoken at both of the land use committee meetings that, that Christina presented at. And, and the, the concern that was voiced by, by a, a large number of people was just those things that I stated. This is unsafe and an unnecessary liability that the entire community will have to bear for years to come for the benefit of one private landowner. And, and thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Doug. I see Shelley has a hand up as well. Shelley, run. Go ahead.
Thank you. Shelley Rowland, Heritage Land Bank, representing the property owner, the municipality of Anchorage. I find it funny to say that because we may not develop 18A in the near future, that this should remain dormant and the home to some trespass structures for which code violation notice has been given. Juniper is the same. Glacier Creek is the same. They were all acquired at the same time for the same purpose, which was to provide access to Lot 18A. Those have been constructed. This is no different. I, I, I am astounded at the community's failure to, to see that. Additionally, if these variances are opposed, it doesn't mean that a road won't go in. It means that the road that goes in will be bigger and I would fully support that. As for safety, I'm not sure who's determining this, but the Department of Transportation as well as the municipality's traffic department have all issued no objection to this proposed plat and four variances. So I, I find a lot of these objections to be self-serving and hollow. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. I see Jonathan Katcher next.
Thank you. Members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Jonathan Katcher and I'm an attorney representing Doug Penn and Lori Van Heest. Folks, all I get to do is look at this image that we're looking at right now. And the image of the road to be named, let's start with that. It's never going to be a road under these circumstances. It's not a road, it's a driveway. We all know, anybody who grew up in America knows the difference between a road and a driveway. And this will be a driveway. And the proof of that, if nothing else, is that the Department of Transportation with reservations, they don't like this, but they understand that they don't get a vote in this fight. The Department of Transportation is going to give them a driveway permit, not a road permit. Now let's talk about this driveway on this public use easement in contrast with Juniper, in contrast with Glacier Creek. Let's start with the fact that Juniper and Glacier Creek all serve multiple residences. This purported road to be named, which is really nothing more than a driveway, will serve one and only one lot. And one and only one lot on the north side, whereas at Juniper and Glacier Creek, the lots served are on both sides of those roads because they are actually real roads. And then finally, consider the topography of Juniper. Consider the topography of Glacier Creek and consider this topography. It's steep. It's a rainforest. And so the notion that this driveway is just going to be in the parameters of this image is really a fallacy. Because in order to build there, you're going to have to excavate the entire corridor. And people just give no notion to the importance of safety. Adding another driveway, because that's what DOT is going to grant them, a driveway crossing of the bike path, a driveway apron on the Alieska Highway is more dangerous than a real road. Roads are safe, driveways are not. And so all of this, and again, I'm lost. Is it Orwell? Is it Lewis Carroll? All this throwing around words like driveways and streets and roads, folks, it's a driveway. That's all it is. And a driveway would be unsafe. And the real bottom line of this is that there is all the access that the Hendricksons need via the existing access that they have. And their only rejoinders are, well, we don't want to move the house because our banking won't let us move the house. We don't want to move the house or we don't want to access that way with the driveway that way because then we won't have the square footage we need in order to sell the front lot for somebody else to build a duplex. They bought this land in November of 2019 with these actual realities in place. They took the land with these conditions. And they had no right to demand special treatment and special circumstances from the Heritage Land Bank.
Point of order, Mike. Point of order, Mike. Point of order. You know it.
I'm not done.
I'm point of order, Mike.
I'm not done.
Just one second. Can, can you both please stop for a second? Right. Christina, can you just state your, state your concern calmly?
Thank you for the recognition. I appreciate that, Mike.
If you have a point, please.
I am. Thank you. I just needed to take a break and make sure I could compose myself and be respectful to the chair that recognized me. The rules of the Gerwood Board of Supervisors is not being followed by the public participant at this time. Comments that are demonstrative to me are impermissible and unethical in our Gerwood Board of Supervisors meeting. Thank you for your consideration, for my point of order.
Thank you, Christina. I'm, I, I think I understand where Christina is coming from, but I'm not sure I quite heard it that way. But you can continue, Jonathan, but please no personal attacks.
Well, if I may, sir, and with all due respect to Ms. Hendrickson and with all due respect to this body, this is a society of laws and not men, or rather women. And this decision is to be made based upon the legal merits. Doesn't matter whether somebody who's applying has lived in Gerwood for decades and been involved in this process or that process. It matters in terms of the legal merits. And this application fails on the legal merit that there is existing access. And it fails on the legal merit that this purported road, which is nothing more than a driveway, will make the bike path and the highway more dangerous. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Jonathan. And I just wanted to clarify, you were, you were speaking as an attorney on behalf of the neighborhood of the South, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Melissa, you have your hand up.
Hi, guys. Wow, this is an interesting meeting. Couple things. Christina, again, welcome to the neighborhood. I do feel like man, I just wish it was different. But getting to the points, he is right when he says that roads are safer than driveways. In a way, I almost wish it was a road because I don't think that you've lived where we, you know, where you are living currently long enough to understand exactly all the different things that can happen. I think, I think variance two possibly was something about a fire truck wanting to reverse up your street and being able to get out of there. wanting to reverse up your street and being able to get out of there. Well, that's not going to happen because there was a cabin that literally blew up a door down from me, and there was no chance of a fire truck getting up there. We just watched it burn. So I'm not sure about variance two and how that's going to work, but variance one, something about, I tried to make some notes, but it's all happening so quickly. Something about, oh, wanting to add trees and, you know, bringing the vegetation back and making it look super cute. I can tell you this much, once you get into the building aspect of things, you're not going to have that opportunity. Sheer dollar amount alone. Twenty-five-foot driveway, 18A, something about, what did I write? Gelling code, ethical, technical? I don't know. Variance three, something along the lines of, oh, the neighborhood and how you feel as if you are complimenting it. I disagree with that entirely due to the fact that it's really self-serving. We could talk about Glacier Creek, Juniper, and no one's ever brought up yet, but we could talk about all those streets and how it's the same exact thing. And Shelley wants to jump in about how she feels that she's aboard. I forget the term she used, but she is not impressed with us disagreeing with it. But I can assure you, if you've lived along this street for 15-plus years, you'll see the things we see. And we're not completely wrong. Nobody, nobody's right, nobody's wrong. Anyhow, variance four, I don't care what you name it. I think it would be awesome if you could name your own street. That would be great. Covenant's conditions and restrictions. You say no short-term rentals, and you have ideas, but you cannot insure them because, again, you don't have any power to do that once you sell those. I I understand the wish and the want, and that's why we live in Girdwood and not Anchorage, right? Because we all have wishes and wants about what we expect, what we expect to walk out to and what we expect to see. But I don't, I don't know if, you know, you say you have them, but I don't, I don't know if you do, really. And again, you just, you just haven't lived on this side of town long enough to understand all that. I mean, I do get you had a condo in the blue building for a while, and that's super awesome. And, you know, I want you to stay. There's, I'm not trying to be mean, but yeah, I think that if you were super into the environment and super into keeping the habitat and the vegetation and all that, you wouldn't have pulled that permit that you had for a year and dropped all those trees, and then they're still sitting there right now. And like, again, I'm not trying to be mean, and I'm not, I don't, I don't know the ins and outs of it in terms of what I'm allowed to say and what I'm not allowed to say, but I just, I feel as if, again, you have the opportunity to move the cabin. I looked at some Helical Pier estimates today, and it would be literally about $6,000 for you to pick up that cabin and move it 20 feet left. I don't know if I'm allowed to say that or not. I really am not trying to offend anybody, but I just, I just feel that it's, it's really going to change things. And good luck with it all. See you on June 2nd.
Before we, can you, can you, can you please hang on a second, Christina? We have some procedural issues to deal with as well. Under our rules and procedures, we can, we can only discuss a topic for one hour unless we, unless we move it, unless we have a motion to extend that particular item, and we also have a requirement to finish by 10 o'clock unless we have a motion to continue the meeting until 11:00. So I would entertain two motions along those lines first, so that way we can continue the discussion if we wish. If any of the other supervisors wish to make either the motion to continue the meeting or to continue the item.
This is Brianna. Motion to continue the meeting past 10:00.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Oh, go ahead, Jen.
Okay, I heard a second and a third. So we'll do this by voice vote. All those in favor, or any discussion first, sorry. Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have a motion to continue the meeting beyond 10 o'clock until 11:00. I also would entertain a motion to continue this item, which started at 8:55, and we've just here a one-hour limit, so continue the discussion of this item.
I'll move to continue the discussion. I think it's important.
Thank you, Jennifer. Do I hear a second?
I'll second this, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any against?
I am against, no.
Okay, so that passes through one. Okay, thank you. Christina, you were raising a point of order. I'll come back to that now we can actually discuss it.
Thank you. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors has rules that say that the comments need to be addressed to the board and not the applicant featured on the agenda. I would really like that to be enforced and the community to be reminded of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Okay. Yes, and a reminder to everybody, try and address through the board, address to me or rather than to Christina directly or the other applicants. Okay. Shelley is next, and then Matt.
Thank you. You know, this is a society of laws, and the fact that it's interesting that it's being spun that the DOT is issuing a driveway permit. I would like to read from the DOT website right now. After establishing an account, you can apply for the following permits. Driveway slash approach road, tourist-oriented directional signs, logo signs, memorial signs, tourist information kiosk, highway event, lane closure, recreational and cultural interest area, and day medical clinic signs. Those are the only permits available. So to say, you know, to spin that this is a driveway permit, that's what it's called when you intersect an existing road with a new road. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Matt?
Okay, trying to figure all this out. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted, if if I understand right, this this discussion today is about the letter of objection or not that was recommended from Land Use Committee. And so I wanted to recap for a couple of folks some of the things that were brought up there. I mentioned, I don't know how it applies to the variances or not, but the, one of the things that feels a little off on this is that this is an example of public lands or HLB lands being used for, you know, gain of one neighboring property member and to the detriment of another. And that, I think that's what stirs a lot of the interest here. Hendricksons stand to gain value to their property and not need, you know, separate access, separate areas on their property for driveways like the rest of us, and enable them to sell off a separate subdivided lot, you know, and and given the current plan, the pens will see a hit in terms of privacy and traffic near their area. Okay, and, you know, that'd be more appropriate if eventually the expected road, you know, or perfectly appropriate if the 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 eventually expected road to lot 18A is eventually being built. But this is basically being driven by, you know, one neighboring property pressing the issue so they can accelerate subdivision of a property that they they purchased, just purchased so that they can afford their their building plans. You know, they brought, bought a property with the intent to subdivide, but they're unable to do it with the property as as it was purchased. You know, subdivision isn't really a right. You look at that lot and you look at that and see if that makes sense. You know, Juniper and Glacier Creek were established prior to our current ordinances. There's, you know, already been mentioned that benefits the other properties that were there. I think all of these prior roads were were put there to serve, and the subdivisions happened after that. You know, there is a benefit to keep the driveway off the properties. You know, there's a, there's a fine line between trying to help the housing situation in Girdwood by offering a duplex lot and then versus the financial benefits of selling off a duplex lot, which can likely bring more value to the sale and their ability to construct, you know, their their envisioned residence, which, you know, definitely a benefit there. Given the the development that we've got in front of us on this slide, that same benefit would not be available to the neighboring property owner, as an example. You know, whereas if this was a road, that would be a much more balanced situation. Now, whether anybody chose to do that or not is another story, but but that same benefit isn't, isn't quite available to the other side. Shift into code requirements. They're there for a reason. If we're building a road, build a road. Echoing some similar comments, you know, of, you know, build the road with the expectations that everyone else in this community has been asked to do after the ordinance was, were put in place. You know, the text of the code states, you know, as as is in the slide now, that it, the PUE has the sole and what exclusive permit to construct a public street, not a private road, right? Variances shouldn't be granted just because it makes it easier to construct or because it helps make a driveway project feasible. Already covered that Juniper and Glacier Creek were not this situation. And like's already been brought up, the safety perspective. I know that when riding with with our two, three, four, all up to 10 years old, the five-month-old doesn't quite ride the bike yet, but riding with all of them, the bike path, it's it's much safer to cross a road, developed road that we have codes for in in this community than crossing a driveway out of the woods. Every time I come down my driveway, I'm aware of that. I stop, you know, look at putting a stop sign up on my driveway so that visitors will stop at that bike path beforehand, but it's a very different visibility situation, both from us exiting the driveway and from anybody coming down the road on the bike. So just, you know, one example of some of the reasons that the building standards are there. So you go to 16-foot, you know, a bike path, you know, if you got gravel, no pavement, it's, it's, it's a different safety scenario. One other thing that, you know, hasn't really been touched on as much here in the comments is the timing of this. It seems like this has been really pushed through. You know, the the pre-COVID Land Use Committee meeting met some strong resistance from many residents that that brought up different things. And there was, there were very little adjustment to the current plan that that we're looking at today. You know, regardless of where it ends up, there's a lot of concern here. There are some things that could be looked at more carefully, some discussions that can be had, you know, and brought up at the Land Use Committee too, and it came up today, the RFB discussion, I mean, there standards of ethics that we're looking to make sure we follow clearly. And in the RFB process, for example, on on not communicating, you know, just just different standards of ethics. And there are some things going on here that that just kind of has the feel, and I've got nothing to solid the throw there, but it has
Point of order.
Really tried to push through.
Point of order, Mike.
Can I just let Matt finish? I think he was about to finish.
Not if he's going to imply that there are ethical violations or something.
I didn't hear that. Thank you.
He did.
I did not hear that, Shelley. Please go ahead, Matt.
Okay, yeah, and I apologize. I was speaking to the the broadcasting of the ethical standards that were that were shared earlier, and I thought that was great, and we should, we should strive for that. So there's a process to get community involvement and, you know, who needs to be communicated with. There's, I think, the one data point that seems, seems a little off, I guess, not in violation. It was legal, but the the cutting of the trees in the PUE before anything was approved, any of these variances, any of the different approvals in place, the the cutting of those trees, I'd be very clear, it was legal. Just because you're legally allowed to do something doesn't necessarily mean you should when when you're looking at the bigger picture of when things are going to be approved. And I think that's, that kind of, you know, highlighted this issue for some. I don't know. The, and then to one of my last points is the access. We are the owners of the the lot to the to the north side. We are the owners of the lot that that has that shared apron. And we we stand ready to to work with the Hendricksons. We, that's been there for decades. That access to that little red house that has now become blue has been there for decades. When we purchased this property, it was, we we knew that, I mean, we could, we have no right to take that access away from their lot, just like they wouldn't have that right to take that access away from ours. And I don't, I'm not the lawyer that understands adverse possession laws and things like that, but that's been in the possession of that household and used as access to that property for, I don't know how many years it needs to be to to make a case that that is legally there. We've brought up, I did specifically bring up that we are okay with signing some sort of document that that, you know, lays that out. It was informal. It wasn't in writing. It was just in a, you know, conversation with Christina that we could, we could play that out there, and and it didn't seem like there was interest in doing that at at that time. Said, oh, let's, let's not go there yet, you know, but we, and we are still ready to document that their legal access is legal access. I don't know if there's a lot of documentation out there, but, you know, if if it's a 20 by 20 section that ends on that apron, I mean, I don't think we have right to that as it is because it's been there. It's been there for years, and we can't take that away from them. That's their lot. Just because the bike path reconstruction project moved that thing four feet in the wrong direction doesn't make it less their access. So you know, and and bottom line, they they bought this property with these conditions in place. You know, they purchased into this arrangement as it is. You know, they they knew that they were unable to afford and develop this land as as they like, but but bought it anyways. The hardship that exists here is financial because they chose to incur it. And this is not a personal thing. I know the Hendricksons. I agree. They're upstanding people here. They've done tons for the community. I've worked with Josh, the fire department on the mountain. Great folks. We support them in developing their own land. We stand ready to work with them. We've got no objections to whatever plans they have for that. But the others here in Girdwood that are showing up and making their their comments are are upstanding citizens as well, and you know, they're just trying to make their voice heard over staying to the standards that that we've put in place in this community. That's all I have.
Thanks, Matt. Shelley, I see your hand up.
Two points, and then I swear I'm quitting because it, yeah, yeah, mental health. First of all, the previous speaker said that the same opportunity was not afforded to the people on the other side. I believe it was in October of 2019, Douglas Penn called Robin Ward to complain about this plan, and he was told that he too could take driveway access off of this road once it was constructed. He replied that he did not want that. So it is available to the adjoining property. Now I'm going to speak as the owner of lot 18A. And I'm, I'm, I do everything in my job in the interest of the municipality. I will not have that questioned. We're getting a free road. The municipality is getting a free road. This is going to reduce my development costs when it comes time to develop lot 18A. That is the only interest I have in this road being built. And that's all I can say. Not going to change any opinions. Thank you.
Actually, I do have a question to that last point. Shelley, is is that actually the case if a road isn't developed to municipal standards? You know, if there isn't full sewer, et cetera, et cetera, surely it's going to increase the cost to develop it to those standards?
No, there won't be sewer taken through this this right-of-way. That's already been confirmed by AWU. So we would either, we would have to improve it to probably collector width, but some of the work would already be done. And until then, this is a public street. Anyone would be welcome to drive up and down it. You can walk up and down it. You can ride your bike up and down it. It's a public street.
So you're saying
Be available for parking because of emergency access. Same as, you know, the complaints that happened in Bear Valley when the hikers park in that cul-de-sac, you know. So this is absolutely a public road, and I see that Mr. Penn wants to respond.
So, okay, just to clarify what you're saying is if 18A was developed, there would never be, Lot 14A would not be used for sewer?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Been confirmed multiple times.
Doug, you have your hand up. I'll let you comment then. If there's no more comments, we'll move on to supervisor discussion. Go ahead, please.
Wanted to respond to the conversation that Shelley just mentioned that I had had. And I simply had called a year ago to HLB to inquire and gather information. I was not, and was told that unless I wanted to participate in development, that I couldn't be involved. So that was simply me trying to get information to be able to educate and share with the community what was happening. There was never an intent. It was a half hour conversation. There's never an intent to try to be part of it. It was simply to be so that we could have a transparent process.
Thank you, Doug. Christina.
Just a quick comment about the bike path. So we live at 150 High Tower. It was a blue building. It's now brown. And for the 15 units that we have here, we have one parking space each. And from those parking spaces, the majority of us pull in and we do have to go across a sidewalk. And that sidewalk services all the way down to the Girdwood Valley School. And so each morning when I did use to commute, one of my favorite things about springtime, I was seeing those that are children that were either going by themselves or being escorted by families on chariots and going to school. It is very often that I engage a pedestrian and bike conflict and have to have a good radius around me to pull out. I often even have some people that aren't familiar with our community that think that there's terrible parking in front of our pull in spots that I too have to wave out of the way, specifically being across the street from the mercantile. I think one of the most dangerous is when I pull out into the lane in front of the mercantile and people decide to drive over the sidewalk rather than backing out of their parking space and going through the two exits and entrances for the mercantile. So I'm quite familiar with having a good safety radius. I am very excited about the street providing a constant funnel for the two driveways so that I could be face first when I do pull into the cabin at this time and my tenants do as well. Really happy to see that we have to pull in, but then we have to check and recheck in order to back out to that spot. So not saying that I'm the most perfect person in the world, not saying that I have the best safety record in the world, but just noting that I do take safety into consideration with a lot of this. And a lot of that is from my practice footprint for nine years here in this community at the Ski View. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Oh, wow. I forget what I was going to say on all of that. However, Shelley, you seem very interested.
Can you make sure? You can ask me a question to ask Shelley or ask it via me.
Okay, Mike, is Shelley representing Christina on any behalf? And then where is 18A? Could somebody show me on the map where 18A is?
18A is the area to the immediate east or north, sorry, to the immediate west, northwest of that top area. So it's the large 48 parcel immediate behind the houses which have Bartley Escal highway. I think Shetty said she's representing HLB. That's what she stated this evening.
Okay, because when I'm on the website and I like cruise down it, I see the MOA, street maintenance. And then I see Christina and Josh. And then I see Matt and Julie, Matt and Julie, and then I see Redman. And I, you know, we go down, but I don't see any.
My understanding is, sorry to interrupt you, my understanding is that Lot 14A is owned by the municipality, effectively owned by project management and engineering, but managed by the real estate department and/or HLB. I'm not actually sure I understand the complete difference between them. It's effectively similar staffing, but it's managed by definitely the real estate department. Does answer your question?
Yeah, I was just getting confused on what Shelley's interest was because she said that she owned 18A. And I just, I didn't see that on the map. So sorry, I'm done.
Yeah, I think that's in a professional role in HLB. That's how I took it. Laney.
Yeah, hi, this is Patrick Dorn. Hey, Mike, can you help me understand why we're revisiting this proposal? This discussion, this presentation, all of the comments and everything were already done last week at LUC. And my understanding is that at that time, an overwhelming vote of objection to this was made and a draft of a resolution was put together to present at GBOS. And I'm just curious, there's two points is, is why are we going through this presentation process again? And two is, could you also revisit the vote on that objection? And inform us on that too, please. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So the process is that the LUC requests GBOS to write a letter of objection. So that's what we're discussing now. And we've given the public, or at least I've chosen to give the public because there's so much interest, give the public plenty of opportunity to express their opinions on this topic. So, yeah, we'll cover that very shortly, but the vote was, I'll just pull it up now. The voter LUC was 4423 with nine abstentions in favor of writing a letter of objection. Okay, Patrick. Okay, thank you. Diana? And then Jen, and I think we're going to wrap this up and move into supervisor discussion.
Sure, I'll be quick. Hopefully you can hear me. I just had a question after listening to some of the discussion. And for clarification, I lived on the mine roads for 14 years, so I'm well aware of a lot of the issues that go on there. We lived on hot and taut up until 2015 for 14 years. But this is the first I heard, even though I saw through the land use committee. Why is it that you can't park a car on their private road? I guess I wasn't clear on why it is that that road will be built but cannot be used to park a car. So I'm sorry if I missed that explanation. Thanks.
I think there are, my understanding is there are, it won't be a dedicated right of ways. It won't really be a, it would be in this. Well, actually, I don't understand whether it's private or public, but it's definitely not public. If it's not dedicated, it's not really a publicly owned street. And I think there are places where we cannot park on public roads anyway due to access restrictions. For example, the turnaround near the end of the Alberg extension, which is designed for fire truck turnaround. We can't park there. And this would be somewhat similar. Did that answer your question, Dan?
Yeah, that's great. Thanks. I just wasn't aware there are different rules for different roads. Thank you.
Well, I think that there's some uncertainty about what status this road would be. Jennifer.
Hey, Mike, I'm actually a little bit regretting my decision to allow more conversation on this. Is there any chance of calling it to question yet? Or do you want to continue with it?
Okay, we can move to the vote. Or we can move to, we can definitely move to a motion. Are you going to make a motion?
I will. Okay, yes, I will. I will move that we do write the letter of objection that was requested by land use.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second address, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. Okay, so let's discuss the letter of objection then. So I will let Jennifer as the proposer. Do you want to discuss first?
No, not particularly.
Understand. Okay, I'll jump in. So lots and lots of topics were brought up and there's clearly a lot of pattern and interest in this issue. A couple of quick things I noticed. I think there was some discussion around CCRs. My understanding is that CCR is attached to a piece of land and can have restrictions, whether they're how they're really enforceable and the cost of enforcing is a separate question, but at least in principle, they're enforceable. And that's true when, you know, a platting action occurs and it's sort of attached to that new lot or parcel. What's confusing me about this is that it's clear that the public use easement is a public use easement. And it's unfair to the extent that, you know, the Hendricksons have happened to have one next to them. But I think anybody who has a public use easement next to them could potentially do the same thing. So it's unfair in the same way as some lots are, you know, are flat or have good soil or good landscape, good topography or no stream running through them or whatever. It's just a characteristic of the platting. So I'm hearing definitely a lot of concern that it's unfair that the PUE is being used for access. But I think that kind of, that kind of just comes with the territory. What I think is, what is in question in front of us now is whether these, whether these variances are reasonable or not. And I think that's definitely the question I'm focusing on. When the statement I heard at land use that this was going to be a publicly maintained road brought up a lot of concerns. There were concerns about it being partly built on private land with no guarantee there would be access in the future to any future owner. There were concerns about the width. There were concerns about surfacing, et cetera. My understanding from planning is that this does not, I mean, while GBOS could choose to maintain it, it's not something the service area has any obligation to maintain. So that lessens some of the concerns when I'm representing the service area. I think still have some concerns over the set of variances and the nature of the variances. Let's see, what was the other thing? Completely separate issue, the why the HLB issued a permit for tree clearing when this, when this topic was clearly raising ire and up the discussion and not being approved. I think that was a very poor choice by HLB. And we may discuss that later, but I'm going to put that to one side for now. So what I see in front of us is that the, there is a, there is a right to use the public use easement. It's not the choice I would have made. I think there are many ways that this could be done more cooperatively, but that isn't the path that's been chosen. What we have in front of us is whether we support or do not support these variances. So I'm going to limit myself mainly to that topic. I'm going to see if anybody else has any comments. Any other supervisors have comments on this or thoughts on the topic? Amanda.
Sorry, it's came late. I'm mostly concerned about the emergency use access. I'm guessing that because they don't have the cul-de-sac lollipop, it's probably a turnaround in the driveway. And with the narrower width. Yeah, as far as that variance.
Hey, any other supervisor comments? Jennifer?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I know that we, Patrick is right, we did discuss this a lot at land use and sitting through all that I felt coming tonight that, or listening in tonight, that I would have to have a really good reason to object to that vote. So I think, again, Mike, to your point, this is just about the variances. It's not about anything else besides this request for the variances. And I think the community was pretty clear in what it thought of those variances. So just to be really clear about what we're voting on, we're voting to support what land use already decided, right?
Yes, we're voting independently, but we are taking into account what land use, what land use, the opinion from land use was. And land use has asked us to write a letter of objection, yep. Okay, any other comments?
This is Brianna, real quick. Thank you, everyone, for your time. And I also was listening through land use last week, as many of us are, and repeating everything. And thank you, Christina, for your patience too. I wish this was a much easier vote because it should be like, it's already been stated just about the variances, which are very complex to explain as well. So that's all.
Okay. I think if there's no other comments, I'll just make one final statement. Okay, Matt, I'll let you speak briefly.
Okay, yes, I'll be brief, but just to reference the variances and that issue, if I understand correctly, one of the things that you look at when you're looking at the variances is whether there is another option. And just restating that we stand willing to grant whatever needs need to be done to pursue their legal right to that apron.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Thanks, Matt. Okay. Yeah, I find this, I think this is, for me, this is kind of difficult because in the very narrow sense, if, again, my understanding is this will be a, this will not be a road which is maintained by the service area. So my primary concerns about the nature of the road aren't my problem, basically. That'll be the adjacent owner's problem. So in the narrowest sense, I think the addressing the variances themselves are, again, not the route I would have chosen, but I'm not sure that I object to all of them. I don't agree with all of them either at the same time. So I haven't quite decided how I'm going to vote on this, but I think we have a call for vote. So Kyle, you do a roll call, please. So what we have, sorry, just to clarify, what we're voting on is to write a letter of objection along the lines of that proposed from land use. So we don't have the exact language together. When we're writing a letter, we don't always have the exact language in front of us. We're voting on the principle of writing a letter of objection to the four variances. Go with the roll call, please, Kyle, unless there's any other questions for clarification from the board. Okay, right.
Mike Edgerton?
No.
Brianna Sullivan?
No.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
That motion ties, so it fails.
Okay. You know, we have the option of, in the case of a tie, if I remember correctly, we have the option of calling for a revote. Could you check that for me, please, Carla Margaret?
Let me look real quick.
Hold on. Yes, I see it under Article 6D tie votes. Upon a tied vote, GBOS will take one revote immediately. If the tie vote remains, the motion fails. So I would entertain a motion. Actually, I don't think we have to as a motion. I think we can just go straight ahead and revote. Christina, do you have a point of order?
No, just an opportunity to answer Amanda's question. That's all.
Amanda, are you okay with? Let's go forward to the vote, actually. That's where we are at the moment in the voting process. So again, this is in order to send a letter of objection. So yes means send a letter of objection, no means do not.
All right, Mike Edgerton.
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, thank you. So we will have to put that in, put that in, draft the actual letter and send that on. This goes ahead to the letter will go ahead to the platting board. And I think, what date is it? The, is it the second? The second of June, I think, is when that will be heard. Okay, Christine, is that your hand up from earlier or do you still have a comment to make?
No, I lower my hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It was a obviously a very time consuming and a detailed discussion, so I do appreciate everyone's patience. Okay, now moving on to the next item. Actually, before that, I should I should just ask, given our time, we have 28 minutes left and we have to finish at 11 by our rules. Are there any time critical issues left on the agenda that we have to cover? Oh, that's a question for staff.
Yes. We have we have a resolution of support for the grant application for our grant application for US DOT route study agenda, item 22. A 21.
Okay.
20. The other ones, I think we could fairly move through fairly fast, just with general updates.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to move items 20. Actually, I, let's do 21 then 20, then 22. Unless someone has a proposal for different order, right? Brianna, so moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jen. So we do this on voice vote. So we all do 21. Sorry. Yeah, 21 then 20, then 22, and then move on to the other items as we can.
Hi, can I say something?
Sure.
I also think we need to discuss the, and I don't think it's one of the things going back to in-person meetings.
We do.
And that might be like really important.
Yes, let's do that immediately after after those three. If if that works. Okay. I think we can do this by voice vote. All those in favor of changing the agenda?
I.
I. Sounds unanimous. So we're jumping to item 21. Who's presenting this?
We can give a general update. Well, in in, I don't know if a representative here from the resort, but Aliaska Resort is requesting a letter of non-injection for a new liquor license for the Two Trees Bistro. This will be located in the new Nordic Spa and it will be a full-scale bar, but more meant for serving cocktails. So Jason Porter is here to address it.
Hi, Jason, go ahead.
Can we just ask him for a letter of non-injection to be sent for our liquor permit for, as Kyle stated, for the Two Trees Bistro. It will have a full-service bar, but the intention is not to have a a bar setting more of just the option to be able to serve cocktails, beer and wine to our guests that are enjoying the spa.
Okay. Any discussion from supervisors? I'm not seeing anything, any comments from the public. Okay. We have a letter of non-injection in the packet if anyone actually wants to look at it. So I would entertain a motion to write a letter of non-injection for the new liquor license for beverage dispensary application for Two Trees Bistro at Aliaska Resort.
Don't move. This is Brianna.
I'll second.
Is Amanda?
Moved by Brianna, seconded by Amanda. Any discussion before though? Okay, can we do a roll call, please, Kyle?
Yes, Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to move to item number 20. Alien species, Inc. Request for GBOS letter of non-injection to use herbicide spray to treat invasive weeds in specific locations within road right-of-way perimeter of soccer field in summer 2021 and 2022. Tim?
Right. Yeah, thanks, Mike. So I'll try to be real quick. So invasive species cause harm. And the big concern is highly invasive plants that on their own have the potential to spread from the human environment to natural areas. You know, of course, Girdwood is a big recreation destination. So both local residents and visitors are traveling through Girdwood and then to natural areas across the state, you know, Chigetch National Forest, Prince William Sound, et cetera. So some of the targets include orange hawkweed, reed carry grass, creeping thistle and Bohemian knotweed. So this is a request for a letter of non-injection from the GBOS for the herbicide control work. So we do consider all the options for controlling invasive plants. And we also do quite a bit of hand-pulling and weed whacking. Generally just slows the weeds down. And it is and is actually counterproductive in the case of orange hawkweed. So we've got a list of projects. Excuse me, generally very, very small sites. Although the the mine roads areas, there's a number of you know, there's there's kind of numerous kind of smallish patches around the mine roads. The other roads. Kyle just just posted the list. Arlberg, Bearbea. There's this small patch at the corner of Garmisch and Aliaska View. The knotweed, a very small site, but that's a that's the most worrisome plant that we're aware of in Girdwood is along Stowe near Alpine Meadows. And then follow-up work along that north edge of the soccer field. And so then I can answer any questions that folks may have.
Okay, thank you. But one of the concerns we often hear is is animals and children, the impact on the animals and children. Can you speak to that, please?
Yeah, no, that's that's a great question. You know, I like the cliche of the right tool for the job. You know, so herbicides are a very, they're especially designed chemicals that that disrupt one one step of the photosynthesis, photosynthetic process. And so ourselves as mammals and, you know, animals and birds and fish don't photosynthesize, of course. So we're not directly you know, we're not going to be directly affected by the herbicides. And additionally, you know, my staff and I are biologists, so we are applying the herbicides directly to the target plants. You know, so we're not, we're not doing any broadcast spraying. We're we're applying it directly to these plants. The plants absorb the chemicals and then sequester it within their tissues. So there's, yes, there's very little there's very low potential for public exposure. And the chemicals are very are fairly low risk to begin with.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? If not, we will we will entertain a motion to write a letter of non-injection for the application of herbicides for invasive weed mitigation in 2021, 2022.
Don't move. This is Brianna.
Thanks, Brianna. Do I hear a second?
I'll second this.
Thank you, Amanda. Any specific discussion, Brianna?
I just want to thank Tim for his presentations at all four meetings he's been present and had to speed through them all. And that first one was really great with all the slides to really demonstrate how they are not very toxic. It's great. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. Any other discussion from the board or from the public? I'm saying, not seeing any hands. So Kyle, can you move to roll call, please?
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, we will now move on to item I think it was item 22. Yes, 22. Gender item, menu C2105-05. HLB requests for GBOS resolution in support of grant application for US DOT routes, route study, design and engineering of Caroleus Drive through South Townsite. Is Shirley presenting this?
Yes, and Kyle is going to give me control, I think.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Here, Shirley.
I'm gonna abbreviate 10 slides into into two.
Did you go?
You can thank me later.
I'll thank you if you have time.
Okay, you can, you try your presenter.
I am. It's not giving me my share option.
Let's see. Try now.
There we go.
Okay.
All right. I presented last week at GBO or at LUC. And I prepared a presentation for tonight describing why I'm asking for this. But like I said, I'm gonna I'm going to skip over all of this. And if you want to read the justification for this, it is in the South Townsite Master Plan and also on the plat itself. So I'm just gonna skip to the end here. I'm going to attempt to write a grant for the citizens of Girdwood to get funds to do a route study and design and and engineering for the mandated by fire code, basically, and by the plat for the exit, the south exit of South Townsite. The award would come in late 2021. Performance under the grant would likely stretch from 2022 to 2024. And the expirations of funds would be 2029, so we would have eight years to spend it. And that's that's it.
How much is the, what's the grant amount?
I'm undetermined at this point. So I'll
Do you have a ballpark figure?
I would say around 600. That's my guess. The last route study that I could find for the MOA was on 42nd Street from Lake Otis to Florian, and that was 2.5 million. I'm not sure why, but it was. A lot of the work has been done here. We've got the wetlands delineation. And you know, Ruane is constructed, Juniper, we have the platted and IGP'd right-of-ways. So I think that I think we'll bring it in lower.
Okay, thank you. Amanda?
Thank you. I am concerned that this is going off of the 2007 South Townsite Master Plan. It's going on close to 15 years since that was completed. Oh, 2014. Okay, I saw an old one, I guess. So that's not as bad. But then we are updating the Girdwood Area Plan. And we have not actually talked about this. So I I'm curious what the public has to say about this extension.
There would be a public process during the route study and in the Land Use Committee last week, there was one objection. I don't know how many positive votes there were, maybe Margaret does.
We can check on that. But in the meantime, Brianna, you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you. And there were a fair amount of abstentions in that vote as well. I'm having a hard time with this one on the agenda. And I looked it up a little bit more in the 2009 South Townsite Plan was amended in 2014. But my concern is that the study has already been done during that South Townsite Plan and the timing doesn't work quite as well as it could with all the master plans and Girdwood Area Plans that are being updated. And then the Iditarod Trail, historic trail that is in that area. And then perhaps a long trail sometime in the next hopefully decade or less, who knows? But the concerns that I've heard from community members are additional traffic in an area where perhaps there could be trails or another egress that isn't driven by cars. Or more investment in our other road maintenance and the concerned impact on lower Iditarod Trail. And view shed and watershed through through those wetlands. There were more, but I'll stop right there.
Thanks, Brianna. Margaret, I think you're gonna, I was just about to read the numbers, but I'll let you do that.
Well, thank you. The Land Use Committee voted 18 in favor, one opposed, with 12 abstentions.
Thank you. So again, my question is, how often is this grant available? I mean, does it have to be? I think I have some, I have some concerns about doing it now versus doing it in a year or two when we've had a more with more consideration of a land use when we hopefully have an adopted plan, which will include the South Townsite updates. So is it, has it got to be now? Or is this an annual or biennial? Or how often does this opportunity come up?
It has been annual, but it has to be re-appropriated every year, so it could stop at any time.
Okay.
But if the community doesn't want it, there are other projects.
Yeah, I definitely heard some concerns as well. Brianna, is your hand still up from earlier?
Oh, sorry. And I I could add one more thing that I took from the area plan of the town site plan. And it says that from Caroleus, the actual location of specific land use types is market-driven. If a specific use is desirable to the community and compatible with other proposed uses in the area, the plan may identify that as a permitted use within the area identified. That's mostly about the land use types being market-driven. That's all.
Thank you. Melissa, you have your hand up.
Well, and again, I am very unprepared for this meeting, but if you've ever been down Caroleus, it's not a place that you truthfully want to develop for that reason. I mean, I just, I don't think that going with the exact way that Anchorage does their roads and Anchorage does their things is appropriate for Girdwood, as we've seen. And I don't know if I'm jumping in or if what I'm saying is incorrect. But from what I see and what I know, I just, I don't think that that's the way we're going. But thank you for listening.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else discussing this, so I would entertain a motion to write a resolution of support for the MI Heritage Bank Department or US Department of Transport Grant Application.
Also move, this is Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Brianna? Is that still?
Oh, sorry.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, I'm not, I'm not completely, I don't I don't object to seeking the funding for the study. I'm not sure. I think it may be a bit premature. But at the same time, we're not we're not doing any construction. We're doing analysis. And generally, I'm okay with doing analysis and getting better understanding situation. Amanda?
Yeah, I would also I feel more compelled to wait until we have our area plan more done, or at least this subject talked about. And I, yeah, I wonder if those funds could go toward a different project.
Jennifer? Jennifer?
Actually, I was curious if a study might end up answering some of the questions for the community, just because it is, it does seem like an unlikely route anyway. I was kind of hoping that if we looked at it further and got some idea of how difficult it was really going to be, that that would, I don't know, maybe make it easier to talk about. I took it as just, unless I'm misunderstanding this, this is about getting information, not making a decision. Sorry, specifically about that route.
Yeah, about the, this, the two, the two, the two routes which have been effectively, partially designed or at least allocated.
Right, right.
Yep. Okay, if there are no more comments, then I think we should move to a vote. Kyle?
Mike Edgerton.
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan.
No.
Amanda Sassy.
No, sorry.
Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
Motion fails by tie to the two.
We know what to do. I think I would, I think we have to call for an immediate remote vote under our current rules and procedures. Any comments or thoughts before we do so? Okay, let's move to a revote, please, Kyle.
Mike Edgerton.
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan.
No.
Amanda Sassy.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
Motion passes three one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's a fun evening. So we would now go back to item fourteen. I did realize there was one. There's one item under new business. Agenda item menu C twenty one oh five zero six. Is that time critical, or do we still have plenty of, do we still have the opportunity to move that to next month for new business?
I think that might be time-sensitive, but we can just introduce it because I think it's on the cycle of the marijuana board for approval.
Okay. What I would like to do then is suggest that we move, we discuss item twenty five, and then we should jump to item eighteen. We may also need to consider a special meeting to discuss item eighteen in more detail. I think that's a beginning. We're not, we're not going to do it justice in the time we have available tonight.
I agree with that.
At least touch on that and make a decision to move it if necessary. Okay, so we'd entertain a motion to jump to item twenty five to at least introduce it.
Some move.
Do I hear a second?
Amanda.
Okay, we'll do this as voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item twenty five, it is new business introduction request for GBOS letter of non-injection for retail marijuana store license renewal. Brent, do you want to speak to this briefly?
Yeah, hello, this is Brent Kars. I'd like to thank the board for moving that up so that I could get that presented tonight. That really helps out with that whole process, because it is a lengthy one. I really just have a brief kind of update for the herbal cash. You know, we've been open this entire last year, seventies week from ten to ten. We had a really solid winter, and we're looking forward to a busy summer. Throughout that last year, we haven't received any negative feedback from any community members or any of our customers, and so we're just looking for that letter of non-injection from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors for that renewal. And I'm open to any questions that the board or the community has for me.
I just have a question about timing. When does the renewal have to be done?
I believe it has to be done by June first, but I would need to double-check that. Or it needs to be, or it's August first, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, so we do have a little bit of time.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
So we will have that on new business, on old business at our next meeting. Okay. I know we're jumping around a lot tonight, but I think we're now on item eighteen. We have four minutes, so I don't think we're going to get in far into the details of updating our rules and procedures to allow online public meetings to continue. I would just said, Kyle, I know we did that survey over the weekend. Was there a, what was the, the sort of headline message from the survey?
Well, let me just post it here real quick for you so you can see it as we speak. Overall, we saw a greater majority of people who would like to stay online. Here's the responses. It kind of gives you an idea of where people are attending meetings. And so the larger majority was attending land use as, as we see. And we saw forty one, you know, forty two percent that wanted to continue online via Teams or similar format. Twenty five who wanted to do hybrid with a limited interaction. And then twenty five who wanted to return to in-person meetings. And so you know, we asked additional questions about are you comfortable with attending meetings in person? And thirty one percent said immediately. Twenty, or twenty percent wanted to wait till fall, and then thirty one percent said thirty two percent wanted to never, they preferred to meet virtually going forward. And then these are just some of the things about what we can do to make it feel, feel, feel more comfortable when they came, and I think the biggest one was mass available encouraged. Even the mass required had more votes. The people didn't feel that was important. And then we had a whole summary of comments down here, which we'll, we'll put together and try to share online here through the packet.
So I, I feel this is a topic we have to discuss. We have to have a, a proper meeting to discuss, so I would, I would suggest that we schedule a special meeting on this. So in fact, we could, we could schedule a continuation to cover the rest of the items from tonight, but at the minimum, I think we have to cover this item. Any thoughts on that?
Sounds good. Thank you for doing the survey.
Yeah, we could either, we could schedule something for later this week, but I think my suggestion may be to do something next Monday. Does that work, schedule-wise?
I believe it does. Yeah, yeah, Margaret won't be here, but I can figure out how to get things taken care of.
Okay, so, yeah, so what I'm going to suggest then is we have a special meeting on May twenty fourth, which we will cover. We will do a proper job of discussing how we can do meetings going forwards. That will be the primary topic, but we can put any other, on any other continuations from tonight onto that agenda as needed.
Okay, we'll send out a poll, a poll for nailing down a time for all of you to, to attend.
Right, I think the assumption should be that it's next Monday at seven PM. But if for some reason we cannot get a quorum together, we may consider a different time.
Okay.
Okay. I think we, we, we are literally hit eleven o'clock, so motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, second, I don't think there's going to be any dissent to this.
Let's go.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. So we'll follow up with a, just to confirm time of the continuation slash special meeting. Thanks, everyone, for your participation tonight.
Okay, good night.
Bye.